So we will call the meeting to order. Another Zoom meeting in another month. So Mauricio, would you like to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Goldman? Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yeah.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
We have a call on present mayor.
Excellent. So we will rise through the pledge, which I will lead. I'll rise, right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, and our own city manager has volunteered to do the invocation tonight. So let's see how he stacks up against the clergy and the rabbis. Chris?
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear Lord, the eternal God, we are thankful for this day and for the opportunity given to us to serve our city. We are also thankful for the leadership provided to us by the city commission and for the concern, diligence, and protection provided to us by all our city employees. We ask that you give us insight as we continue to create a world-class home for the people of Sunny Isles Beach and that we do so with kindness and compassion. We thank you for all that we have been able to accomplish and we eagerly anticipate what we can achieve with the wealth of talents and experience in a collective team amongst us here today. And to this, let us all say amen.
Great job. Thank you, Chris. Okay, we have minutes from the prior hybrid meeting of March 18th. Have everybody's had a chance to review them? Do I hear a motion to approve them?
A moment.
Moved by the vice mayor. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Viscara. All in favor? Aye? Okay, the minutes are approved. I've got my, um, my order of business and general opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for joining us tonight. Please ensure that your microphone is muted to avoid interrupting the proceedings tonight. Individuals who want to speak on any item of the agenda are asked to use the raise hand function, which can be located by the following steps. If you're using an iPad, tap the center of your screen, tap on the three dots located at the top right-hand corner of your screen and select raise hand. If you're using a desktop, click on participants at the bottom of your screen, which opens a side window listing all participants. On the participant screen, click on the three dots located on the bottom left-hand corner and select raise hand. And if you've called in and are listening on your phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and the city clerk will call on you based on the last four digits of your phone number. When called upon, please state your name and address for the record. Speakers may also use the chat function to submit their comments and questions. These chats are only available to the commission and the host or chair will read it into the record. The chat function is located at the bottom of the screen. Please make sure to type in your name and address for the record and speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point and refrain from making duplicate comments. And all speakers, because of the nature of how we're doing this, we limit it to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you don't adhere to the chair's advice, your microphone will be shut off. Furthermore, if you wish to participate on any given item, you must raise your hand before the closing of the comment, the public comment portion of the set item. We've been getting a lot of that where I close the public comments and then people come back and raise their hands and then they think that they weren't called upon during public comments. So we're going to try to be a little bit more, um, um, a little bit more accurate in how we're, and how we're managing our Zoom etiquette in our Zoom meeting tonight. I just have a, I, I want to make a couple of comments. I had to go to Europe this week on OneBlood Business, you know, for my, for my day job for the blood center. So I had to go to Amsterdam and I was there for six days. And because of the nature of what I do, I, I get a, I get a, a letter from the Belgian or from the Dutch embassy that lets me into Europe. And so it wasn't easy though, you know? It was three COVID tests and even though I've been vaccinated, they're not really recognizing the vaccine yet for, you know, any kind of border patrol or anything of that nature. But when I got to Amsterdam, probably, you know, one of the first time in a hundred years during this period that there's no tourists, the town's completely empty. I walked around, I had a pretty tight schedule, but Saturday I had about three hours and I walked around. And the few shops that were open, I walked in and they wanted to know how I got there because they hadn't seen an American tourist in God knows how long. I guess, you know, I'm bringing this up because as bad as we think we have it, you know, here in Florida with the, with COVID, the rest of the world is still in a very, very difficult state. You know, and, um, and this was just, this was just a really rude awakening for me when I, you know, you know, when I was in Europe. And frankly, you know, England's the same way and I, you know, I, I, I was trying to have a meeting in London. I couldn't have it because I can't, you know, I had no real reason to go into, into England. So very, very difficult. When I flew back, um, I flew on Tuesday morning from, um, from Amsterdam to London, I flew back from London to Miami. It was a 787. There were 18 people on the plane. So, um, you know, which would normally hold probably close to 400 people, you know, 350, 400 people. So, you know, pretty amazing. And so, um, you know, I just bring this up because, um, you know, you know, agree or disagree, we've had an extraordinary situation here in Florida and, you know, where we live as far as, um, as, you know, being able to have some semblance of normality, um, you know, during this phase of the virus. And I would encourage everyone, if you haven't gotten vaccinated and you have no great moral standard against it, get vaccinated because the fact is, I believe that that's what's going to keep us, you know, keep us improving our situation, um, you know, here locally. And, um, you know, a lot of folks are getting vaccinated. It's becoming much more widespread now. Obviously it's getting easier to get. It's kind of like masks in the beginning, you know, they're almost impossible to find. And then after a couple of months, the supply chain filled in and, you know, and everybody could get masks. And it's the same thing with the vaccine, you know? I think what we're going to see is that, you know, it's, it's starting to fill in now. And, um, you know, notwithstanding the bobbles back and forth on, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pressure from the press on the vaccine. So anytime that there's any anomaly, you know, we hear about it. But the fact is, is that, um, you know, tens of millions of people have been vaccinated now and it's, it's, you know, I, I think it's been proven to be, you know, you know, safe and efficacious. So, um, but, um, but again, I just wanted to reiterate as a community, you know, as a region, as a state, um, we've been incredibly fortunate. And I think that, um, I think a lot of the decisions that were made might've been controversial at the time, but, you know, certainly now, you know, I think we're reaping the benefits of a lot of it, you know? And it doesn't matter what party you're in. But the fact is, is that, you know, as a region, I think that we're, you know, doing extremely well. And, um, so that, that, that was my, um, um, you know, that was my European comparison in my opening statement tonight. So, okay, we're going to move on to our agenda. Item five, we have a special presentation, a, from the distracted driver awareness month proclamation presented by Vice Mayor Satchin. The vice mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mauricio, would you mind reading the proclamation and then I'll give the, the presentation?
Sure. One second.
Thank you.
The proclamation states, whereas more than 700 injury crashes involve distracted driving on an average day and the economic toll of all motor vehicle crashes in the, in the United States annually exceeds $400 billion. And whereas talking on a mobile phone, even in hands-free mode, texting, programming your dashboard infotainment system or GPS device can divert your attention away from driving and result in physical or cognitive distraction. And whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach residents and all Americans deserve to live in communities that provide safe driving behaviors and healthy lifestyles. And whereas preventing distracted driving injuries and deaths requires the cooperation of all levels of government, employers, and general public. Whereas the city continues to work to promote policies, practices, and procedures leading to increased safety, protection, and health in businesses and industry, in schools and colleges, on roads and highways, and in homes and communities. And whereas spring is a time when people begin to log more miles on the road and it is imperative to focus attention on motor vehicle injury risks and preventions. And whereas the city strongly urges residents and businesses to observe distracted driving awareness month by practicing safe driving behaviors and pledging to drive distraction-free. Now therefore do I, George H. Shaw, as mayor and on behalf of the city commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as distracted driving awareness month in the city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you, Mauricio. Can you also put, pull up the slide? So, so this is something that is certainly important, not just to me, but to everyone on the commission and to everyone in our community. As we just heard, um, in the brand study, walkability and safety were, were spoken about a lot. And I think that in order for us to continue this, we really need to bring awareness to distracted driving. This is something that I've been working hard for in Tallahassee and DC and it's moving along, uh, but it's still not where it's supposed to be. So I pulled up some statistics. This is specific to Florida that I wanted to share with the residents and the commission. And, uh, this is all readily available and perhaps we can post the link online, um, uh, today or tomorrow. So what you see here is that especially in Florida, we have, and this is not, again, this is all of Florida, the most pedestrian injuries and fatalities happen as you would expect during our high season, which is, uh, uh, the late fall and the winter ending sometime around now. So for me, this was not just because this is something that everyone is doing around the country, but because we specifically, as everyone knows, have had a horrible tragedy recently and before that, and before that. And, uh, can you pull up the next slide, please? And I've been working with the, with the school to, to educate the kids on this, to help educate the parents. But I think it really needs to be, a light needs to be shined on this by, by all of us. If, if you look at the numbers, 2019 compared to nine years ago, this is the most recent information, has gone up dramatically. And I could only imagine that this has a lot to do with the use of smartphones. Uh, as we all know, when we're driving, we look over to your right, we look over to your left and 99% of the time, people are on their phone and they think it's okay because they're at a stop sign. They think it's okay because there's a stoplight. The fact of the matter is, is that any distraction, and it's not just the cell phone, is really the matter of, of life and death. So I urge our residents, our businesses, our many, many visitors right now. We have a lot of visitors. I know everyone has seen the New York and New Jersey license plate. To, to please take special note of this and be extra careful, especially in areas where we have our children, our elderly in the plazas, uh, by the shopping centers, by Publix, by the schools certainly. So if you look at the fatalities in 2020, this is from another source, it was 299 in the state of Florida. Clearly even one is too many. And I think that it's important to look at these statistics so people have a better understanding of what a small distraction actually means. The numbers are a little bit, um, if you look at 2020 at the very bottom, you would think that in 2020, when most of us were supposed to be home, those numbers would go down. But they don't. They, they actually go up significantly, which just tells me that it probably would have been that much more if it was just a normal year. So, um, you know, with that, I, I, I'm, I know that this is important to everyone. I, I want to call, I want to name April anti, or anti-distracted driving month. And I think that, um, Chris had some additional updates for us that were specific to, to our city.
Yes, Vice Mayor, just to, um, reiterate some of the information which we have been putting out and, um, and a few events that have taken place recently. So, um, as you may know, if you've been following this, the police have resumed their zero tolerance program, which was significantly stymied by the, uh, uh, COVID during 2020. We've also been in partnership for a while. A new, uh, a new, uh, chapter in our partnership with FDOT District Six has started in February where we campaigned in the tri-city area. They call it tri-city, but there's actually one, two, three, uh, at least four cities in it, from Surfside to Bay Harbor to Bell Harbor and us. And I just want to give you a few recent statistics. The most recent road report from February 11th to through, um, 4/13, through April 13th, over 5 million vehicles have gone through the city. We've issued 1,973 citations. There's been a total of 88 accidents. And again, on that figure, uh, many of these are, are, um, in the shopping centers and many of these are caused by distraction in the overnight hours. The High Visibility Enforcement Detail, which is part of that program with the, um, with the state, um, has, um, has three, three top, this was the, uh, February 26th event that we had here in the city. This was a, a one-day event. And the three top categories of, um, interactions, we, they call them contacts. The top one was with pedestrians. 451 pedestrians, um, were spoken to and involved in it. We had 87 contact with motorists who, uh, the police just went up to their cars and talked to them at, at, uh, stoplights and, and, and other situations. And 63 bicycles, 63 bicycles, uh, people on bicycles that they spoke to also on that day. Just happens that the next event was yesterday and it was a joint event with Bell Harbor, where they started in the morning in Bell Harbor and the afternoon in Sunny Isles Beach. About a six, uh, six and a half hour actual active program. They made one arrest. They issued 145 citations, uh, 53 warnings, and, um, 226 educational contacts where they talk about and give out pamphlets. Just a, a statistic, uh, again, um, through the calendar year, the last two full, uh, calendar years that I can reference it to. 2017, for example, there was 729 total accidents in the city. 2020, for the year, the total was 511. We found that from the state records, our, um, our numbers have gone down in, in just about all categories of, of policing, but I'm just focusing on this for now. As I said, COVID, COVID had brought down the number of, um, of, of citations for 2020. We went from 3,326 in 2017 to 1,560 during the height of the COVID pandemic 2020. Another interesting, um, uh, statistic is the, um, since we've, since January 1st of 2021 through, uh, March 16th. So it's about, it's a two and a half month timeframe. Our top categories have been, number one is 259, um, speeding, uh, tickets issued, citations issued during that two and a half month period. Second was, uh, uh, red light citations, 190, and 157 stop signs, just in that two and a half month period. That's the latest update on, on that information.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. I'm sure everyone else does too.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. It's interesting, I was interviewed on this not too long ago when I said, DWD, driving rather distracted is the new, is the new DUI? The only issue is it's much harder to detect. Everybody does it at some time, you know, it's just completely pervasive. So I think it's great that, um, you know, that you're bringing awareness to it. I think we're all aware of it, but I don't think that, I don't think it gets enough attention, you know? And, um, the, you know, the statistics that you showed for last year, it's got to be twice as bad because it was such a, you know, such a, such a benign year for driving. You know, you think about it, you know, for three months, the roads were empty, you know? So, um, so, um, but in any case, it, you know, um, thank you for the, you know, thank you for the proclamation. Okay, item 5B, Commissioner Viscara has autism awareness date. Commissioner Viscara?
Hello. Yes, so, so April is traditionally autism awareness day, autism awareness month. And, um, so we, I also have a proclamation that, you know, Mauricio will be reading into the record. Uh, and before we do that, um, just wanted to make a few comments. The, um, there's been a shift on, on, on two fronts in this category. And one of them is the autism awareness, now it's now a little bit broader and includes other conditions that used to not be included, like Asperger's. And also there's been a shift from autism awareness to autism acceptance, right? Some things like distracted driving deserve awareness and other things deserve acceptance. And autism being one of them, I, I wanted to highlight that shift. I think it's moving in the right direction and, uh, it's, uh, the proclamation is being offered in that spirit. And I, I think, um, you know, that would be my intro for that.
Great. Mauricio, would you like to read it?
Yes. Proclamation reads, whereas autism spectrum disorder, or known as ASD, is a developmental disability that can cause significant social, communication, behavioral challenges. Whereas autism is defined by a certain set of behaviors and is a spectrum condition that affects people differently and to varying degrees. And whereas diagnosis of ASD now includes several conditions that were previously diagnosed separately, such as autistic disorder, pervasive developmental disorder, and Asperger's syndrome. And whereas approximately 1 in 54 children have been identified with ASD in the United States, with the disorder being about four times more common among boys, which is 1 in 34, and among girls, which is 1 in 144. And whereas ASD prevalence has increased by more than 10% since 2014, with more than 5.4 million Americans living with the disorder. And whereas while there is currently no known single cause of ASD, early diagnosis can help a person receive support and services needed, which can lead to a quality of life filled with opportunity. And whereas during the month of April, we as a city pledge to promote autism awareness, acceptance, and inclusion for all, and will strive to ensure that each person with ASD is provided an opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life. Now therefore do I, George H. Shaw, as mayor and on behalf of the city commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as autism acceptance month in the city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Viscara, for, um, bringing our attention again to an important issue. Okay, we're going to move on to item 5C, our college scholarship awards in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. And who's going to take that? Susan?
I'm giving, yeah, Susan is handling that. She's done all the work on this for many years.
Uh, actually 10. Thank you, Chris. This is my 10th year of awarding this, um, these scholarships. And, um, it was a great pool of applicants again this year. It was a very difficult task and I'd like to say thank you to the Scholarship Review Committee, who did an amazing job in narrowing it down to the only four that we can actually award. So, um, they are attending through Zoom, but we also have a PowerPoint so we can show you their wonderful graduation photos. All were worthy in academics, essays, and future goals. Four, however, stood out for their community service, specific to the city of Sunny Isles Beach. They were proven to actively participate in the enhancement of the quality of life for the community by furthering the city's goals through events and programs. And by that I mean, they were there. If you've been to our events or participated in our, um, after-school program or summer camps, you probably have seen them. Very active in the community, lots of, um, hours of service and definitely stood out as, as being responsible and stellar pillars of our community at such a young age. So please join me in congratulating Sharon Delfino, Moana Maria Franco, Daniella McKenzie, and Renzo Trujillo. We wish them great success in their academic future and we look forward to them coming back and continuing, continuing to be active members of our community. Congratulations.
Fantastic, fantastic. They're also very nice dressers, just for the record. But that's, that's great. Great job, Susan. And I know, um, we have a scholarship program at OneBlood. It is very, very hard when you go through these applications and resumes to try to, you know, pick a winner. I mean, it's really, really difficult. So, um, I think it's interesting focusing on the service to the city. You know, certainly, certainly creates a tie in, you know, in addition to, I mean, all these kids usually have just stellar records, you know? And it makes it very, very difficult to differentiate. So, thank you. Okay, that is it for our special presentations this evening. And we have one zoning matter tonight, and that's item 6A. So let's move on to our, our, our zoning matter. Mauricio?
Yes, Mayor, this is Claudia. She'll be coming on shortly now. Whenever you're ready, Claudia.
Okay, Claudia.
Good evening, my, uh, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. Do you want to read the statement, Mauricio, for the Sunny Isles?
Oh, yes, I am so sorry. Give me one second when we pull it up. Okay, in accordance with the LDRs of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, all notices have been posted on the property and have been mailed and advertised in the newspaper. All persons that are going to speak, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. The sworn testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Um, just one more question. Ed, do you want to acknowledge any ex parte communications before we move on?
Yeah. Does, uh, does anyone on the commission have any ex parte communications that we need to disclose at this time?
No, none. Don't. I think, I think you want to unmute Dana. Yeah.
Uh, yes, I've had ex parte communications with a few of the neighbors in, in Atlantic Isles. Wait, I, I thought we were talking about just the applicants. I have spoken to some of the neighbors as well.
No, it's any, any ex parte communications that you've had regarding this particular item.
Likewise with the neighbors. I was under the same impression. Okay, so, considering, I am one of the neighbors, so.
All right, um, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. We are tonight presenting application number BZ2021-03 for property located at 318 Atlantic Avenue. This is a single-family home requesting side setback variances, a pool side setback variance, and a height variance. The applicant, um, Mr. Point, Point Pintook, I'm sorry for mispronouncing the name, is the owner of the property and is seeking for this approval for this variances requests. Specifically, the applicant is proposing to have, as I mentioned before, a side setback variance of five feet, whereas seven and a half feet is required on the east side. And is also requesting a side setback variance on the west side, where he's proposing five feet, whereas seven and a half feet is required. There is also a reduction request for variances on the pool side, where seven and a half is being proposed, whereas nine and a half is what's required. Additionally, there is a height variance for the single-family home structure for 39 feet and 10 inches measured from the corner of the road, whereas only 35 feet is allowed. The height variances is specifically for the elevator override and trellises on the rooftop terrace. The applicant has said in the application that the variances request will not negatively impact the adjacent properties and has provided letters of no objections from the adjacent neighboring property owners as part of this application. from their adjacent neighboring property owners as part of this application. So with that said, this application is consistent with our city comprehensive plan and is generally consistent with the city's land development regulations. Based on our staff review, there are not objections to their request if proposed conditions are followed. Therefore, this application is presented for your consideration. Tonight we have the property owner, Mr. Pinchuk, and also the designers of the property, Claudine and Giorgio Lostao, that they will continue with the presentation.
Okay, please proceed. Who, who wants to go first? The designer or the applicant? Claudine? Okay.
I'll go first. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Sorry that we're not meeting in person. We are vaccinated, Mr. Mayor, so that's a good thing. Just got our second shot this week. So we would like to go through the plans with you. I think the owner does have a statement that he'd like to speak. So I'm gonna hand it over to Alina right now, just to make your statement. On behalf of Vitali, Mr. Pinchuk has recently had surgery and is unable to speak at the moment, oral surgery. So his daughter is going to speak on his behalf.
Okay, come off mute and proceed. Yep, you're on mute.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alina. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
So I'll be speaking on behalf of my father, Vitali Pinchuk. He had surgery for nine hours. He's having a hard time speaking, so I do have his opening statement here. Good evening, dear Mayor, City Commission members, Sunny Isles Beach team members, ladies and gentlemen. It is a pleasure to be here tonight using this innovative venue, Zoom. My goal tonight is to address any questions and explain any clarifications that you may require of me as I seek your approval for some variances. In the sense of time, I would like to rapidly go over my life personal journey that drove me to Sunny Isles Beach over 15 years ago. 32 years ago, I landed in New York. I had no money, no English, no credit history, no papers, not even a roof over my head, and I had to sleep under a bridge. All I had was a strong worth ethic, the dream of being free and to build a life for me and my family. Since those times, with a lot of hard work, ethics, good luck and good eyes of God, here I am, asking your support for a small amplification of the corridors of my dream home. About 17 years ago, I had the opportunity to become a Florida resident and fell in love with Sunny Isles Beach. I initially had an apartment at Pinnacle condominium. From there, I could watch and wonder the changes from the motel row to the beautiful architectural display and residential paradise that our city became. My love for Sunny Isles is so strong that I.
Alina, you're on mute.
Yeah, you, you just went on mute, Alina.
So sorry.
So you left off, you left off that my love for Sunny Isles.
Yeah. It's so strong that I also moved my business from New York to here so that I could enjoy this city and physically recover from a medical condition on my back spine that plagues me from time to time. This brings me here today as I share my home with my wife Tatiana and daughter Alina. Our family is here now and I look forward to having my future grandkids attend our neighborhood school. This also brings me to the design needs for our home that is being planned with my seasonal handicap in mind, seeking wider corridors, a main elevator and other necessities such as simple accessibility considerations. We have chosen to build from scratch, to demolish the current old house and thus lose the grandfathered setback on the current setbacks. In sum, we will only be a little more than 13 inches in difference, only in some parts of the house. In simple terms, we will follow all city conditions and only ask for these small variances that also include a height variance, so that all the features we need can be created in this home. My passion for gardening and incoming age will certainly allow me more time to develop the landscaping on my home, ensuring also the beautification of our street. My passion for gardening, ah, sorry. We have also personally met with our neighbors and have shared our building plans and have received support and written approvals from them with no objection, as we are all looking forward to newer and safer homes to be built on our island. The team from Sunny Isles Beach Building Department has been amazing in guiding us through the process, teaching me what we can do and helping me in every single step of the way. For that, I'm very grateful. Claudia, Jennifer, the examiners and everyone else who's assisted us in the best possible way. And this brings us to this meeting. Thank you. As I close, I'd like to ensure you understand that I really appreciate your time and consideration as I kindly ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Alina. Excellent. Okay, Claudine?
Yes, can we pull up the, the presentation deck, Claudia and Mauricio, please? Will I be in control of the deck or will Mauricio have control?
Yes, give me one second. I'll, I'll bring it up right now.
Okay. So what I'm, I'm gonna do very quickly, Mauricio, is I'll probably ask you to like go from slide to slide. And I'm gonna start, just kind of starting on the initial floor plan, the site plan. Can you go to a full? Perfect. If you go next slide. Can I, you're gonna control the slides, Mauricio? Yes?
You should have access. I'm sorry.
Oh, I do have access. Let's see. No, I don't.
Okay, you can just tell me and I'll move through the slides.
Okay, so if you can, so this first slide here is showing the first area, first level area calculations, which I think you all have the drawings for. So I'm gonna go through it very briefly because I really want to get to the, the main points of where the variance requests actually are. So next slide, please. This again shows the second level and the area calculations, just ensuring that the, all the requirements are being met and everything is very clear for each, each level and also indicates which areas are open to below. Next slide, please. And the roof level, same, same situation. Next slide. So on this slide, if we can, I guess I don't have control of the mouse, but if you can go, Mauricio, if you can circle around to the bottom right-hand corner, which is the garage over there. So this area here is where we're, we're asking for, that area there is being impacted where we're asking for the variance and it's specifically for a one and a half car garage because of accessibility. So to be clear, the house is very much designed in the spirit of our, of the owner being able to have full accessibility in this house. And to that end, there is a, a lift in, in the garage, which he needs clearance around, which is why it's only a one and a half car garage. And to get that clearance and access into the property, we're asking for the variance only in that corner of the garage. And then Mauricio, if you do me a huge favor and go over to the far upper left-hand corner where the kitchen is, that area there, in that area there, Vitali, Mr. Pinchuk spends a great deal of time, as you can imagine, with the family around the kitchen. So the kitchen was a very, very important part of the home for him as, as I think most people think of the kitchen as the heart of the home. It's very much the case for Mr. Pinchuk and his family. And so to get the necessary accessibility around all sides of the kitchen and full circulation, we are asking for a small variance on only that portion of the kitchen as well. Next slide, please. And I'll show you in a couple more slides where the actual correlations are. So this is a second floor plan. Next slide. And the roof. Just to note on the roof, because Mr. Pinchuk is an avid gardener, we have added a lot of landscaping on the roof and that's part of the reason, if not the main reason, why we have the elevator, in fact, going up to the roof for roof access for him. It also lends a great deal of extra fauna and landscaping to the neighborhood as well. Next slide. So this slide here, we put together just for, for all of you to be able to see very clearly the setback adjacency. So being very sensitive to that, to the issue that we're asking for a variance, we don't want to not be greedy, but we've very much only approached it in the way of, of asking for the minimum that he needs to be able to live comfortably with his accessibility. And so to that end, the two circled areas that are above will show that only in those instances are we asking for the variance. The other lengths of the property are completely within the existing variance requirements at the moment. Next slide, please. So here, I think this is a really helpful shot. So this shows you the, the front corner on the left-hand side. It shows the neighbor and on the right-hand side, it shows the front corner of the house. So this shows you that we're only asking for 23 feet 8 inches length of the exist of the new house for the setback. All the rest of the length of the house and all other sides of the property are within the variance. It also further shows that this corner of the property where the garage is in no way impacts the adjacent neighbor's quality of life or their property. And it, it specifically abuts and opens onto their driveway and lawn landscaped area. We also have a letter and have spoken and worked with their, this adjacent neighbor to ensure that they had no issues and they are in full support and are excited to see the house come to life. Next slide, please. This other slide here shows on the right-hand side, the portion of the kitchen area and that length. So this length is only 27 feet of the entire structure and it's adjacent to the other neighbor on the other side, but it's only adjacent to their landscaped outdoor deck and pool. If you can see from the aerial view on the left-hand side, the neighbor himself, themselves have a very, very landscaped side yard. So it probably wouldn't even be very visible. In addition, you can see that we're doing landscaping on the roof and also on both sides of the property to help mitigate the request. Next slide. This, this is specific to the height request and I want to just make sure that, that you all understand our point of view and our intent. It's very much in the spirit of no monster mansions. And so to that end, we're only asking for this, this height variance simply because of the elevator housing and the shaft. And to further mitigate that, we are being sensitive to the issue of the height request being, being something that isn't normal. We've intentionally designed the house with the elevator pushed back so that the elevator is pushed back 24 feet 9 inches, so almost 25 feet from the front face of the property. And the reason why we did that is what you can see here from these renderings. The elevator shaft will in fact not be visible from the street or from the neighbors from any angle that we can see from this model. In addition to that, the elevator shaft itself will be landscaped all around. So the actual structure of the elevator will in fact also not be visible. And so I think this is a pretty good, two, two good views that show that it will not be a visible elevator. Next slide. These are the north elevations. They're basically the same elevation, but the elevation on the right is showing with the front gate and the wall. And then once you're inside the property, the elevator, the elevation is showing on the left where the garage is. And in red, you can see where the top of the parapet is. And then the top horizontal red line is that variance height, which is the exact height minimum required to have the elevator open onto the roof deck. Next slide. This is the west elevation and it shows again the same top line, just for reference and in context to the whole residence, what that top line looks like. We are showing some trellises as well at the same height. Those trellises are movable, removable, and our main concern is ensuring that we can get that elevator shaft so Mr. Pinchuk can have access to that roof garden. Thank you. This is the south elevation from the water view. Same elevation again, nothing changes. And then the east elevation on the flip side. Next slide. We've also put together in this deck the landscape calculations. I want to mention that because we know that we're asking for variances and also just because we think it's good design, to offset some of the variance requests as well as the height, we've exceeded the landscape requirement. So to that end, you can see the house is designed with two interior courtyards to add extra landscaping and fauna that also face the adjacent neighbors as well. And so we think it's going to be a spectacular space that really embraces the outside and the inside and Sunny Isles in general. So that's the first level. Next slide. The roof level calculations. We calculated the landscape again, understanding that this was going to be a roof garden for the Pinchuk family. You can see here, it's going to be lovely, lots of green space and gardening areas and shrubberies as well as if you look on the, almost in the middle off to the right is where the elevator shaft comes out. This is a reference, only for reference for you on the furniture plan. What we've indicated on this slide is showing, if you see those little circles, they're basically wheelchair radius that we kind of designed and laid out for Mr. Pinchuk to see that he would have accessibility in all the main areas that he, he'd be able to comfortably function and flow through the house. So would you let me to walk you through the floor plan? Are you guys okay? Nope, you're good? Okay. This is the second floor. Again, looking at the circulation, the upper left-hand side is the master suite and master bathroom, which is obviously very important for accessibility for Mr. Pinchuk and his accessibility. Next slide. And the roof, again, similar layout with the accessibility wheelchair for reference. We've also thrown in some renderings for fun, the front approach and the side, side front as you're driving up to the property. Next slide. I love this shot. This is a, it's kind of like an aerial side elevation, but it gives you a good idea of the natural light, the abundance of landscape and greenery and shows the length of the lot. And these slides show the rendering from the water view. So that gives you an idea of what that approach would look like from the water. And another side view. And I think that's it. This just goes back to Claudia, your, your documents. So happy to answer any questions and thank you again so much for your, your time. We very much appreciate it and Claudia and Jennifer have been like really very patient with us and very helpful. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Claudine. Claudia, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Mauricio, do we have any, any feedback from the public?
We do, Mayor. We have, we have some letters of objection. I mean, I'm sorry, support and one objection that I'll read into the record right now. Just give me one second.
Thank you.
Okay, the first one comes from Raul Rodriguez, address is 287 Atlantic Isle. It's addressed to the Building Department and the city as a whole. Says, "We are very happy to welcome a new resident to our small community, especially those that will be renovating and improving old residences into more adequate homes under modern construction methods. In light of this, we would like to express our support and endorsement for the new home project proposed for 318 Atlantic Isle. We understand that homeowners have an expedited construction schedule in process and we welcome such activities. Projects such as this will be enhancing the quality of homes in our neighborhood while minimizing disruption during the construction timeline. We thank the city in advance for any support that can be given to this project." The next one comes from Gustavo Gurgulino. Address is three, I'm sorry, did not provide an address, or he did, I'm sorry. "My name is Gustavo Gurgulino, owner of 323 Atlantic Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. I live across the street from the subject property and have no objection for, for the owner Vitali Pinchuk of 318 Atlantic Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, to obtain variance to limit the side yards five feet. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me." The next one comes from the Atlantic Isle Civic Association, signed by Gustavo Gurgulino. Says, "Dear sirs, as you are aware, our land is going over significant efforts, our island is going over significant efforts to ensure the proper development and enhancements of our neighborhood. Part of these efforts include the beginning of the renovation project of the beach lot owned by our association that has received your endorsement and support. For that, we thank you. In this consideration, we also are very happy to welcome new permanent residents to our small community, especially those that will be renovating and improving old residences into more adequate homes under modern construction methods. In light of this, we would like to express our support and endorsement of the new home project proposed for 318 Atlantic Isle. We understand that the owners have an expedited construction schedule in process and we welcome such activities. Projects such as this will be enhancing the quality of the homes in our neighborhood while minimizing disruption during the construction timeline. We thank the city in advance for any support that can be given to this project." The next one is from Hector Ortiz. Says, "I'm Hector Ortiz, the owner of the house at 320 Atlantic Isle and I have no objection for the owner of the house at 318 Atlantic Isle to obtain variance to limit the side yards to five feet. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me." Next one is Richard Mossen. Next one is Richard Muffin. It reads, "I'm Richard Muffin, Muffin, the owner of the house at 310 Atlantic Isle, and have no objection for the owner of the house at 318 Atlantic Isle, Sunny Isles Beach, to obtain variance to limit the side yards to five feet. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me." And this next one is from Danny Glacias. It reads, "As a member of Sunny Isles and a longstanding resident, I see very new home development in our city as a significant gesture of faith in what we are building here. With that in mind, I would like to express my support to the new single home residences being built in Sunny Isles Beach in this specific case and as a resident of Atlantic Isle. I'm sure you share with me the results from my island and from my city. I had the chance to see the plans and will love to see 318 Atlantic Isle become a reality. Thank you for your support." And we have one letter of objection. If you just give me one second, Mayor. I'm so sorry. I apologize. I, I had it here and it just closed on me.
Okay. Do we have any members, you want to, I mean, to call the members of the public, you want to speak before we, while you look forward, or you got it?
Uh, yes, Mayor, please, if we can do that.
Okay, nice.
So, okay, so we have Ari Steiger. One second. Ari, your name and address for the record, please.
And come off mute, Ari. You're on, you're on mute.
Okay.
There you go.
Claudia. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The ground floor elevation, what is it, the first floor?
Ari, your name and address for the record. Okay.
262 Atlantic Isle, Ari Steiger. What is the first floor elevation of the house? What's the height?
We're pulling up the drawings right now because the deck isn't open. Give us one minute.
The height is 9.17 ngbd.
So the total is 40, 40 feet high, right?
The total of the entire property?
Right.
It's at 35 foot, 35 feet, and then the elevator goes up another four foot, 10 inches above that.
Close nine feet from the crown, right?
No, the ground is elevated. The crown of the road, it's at 4.59. So it will be-
59, so it's five feet.
It will be another four and a half.
Okay, I like the house.
Thank you.
I recommend.
Okay, waiting Ari over is a big deal, just for the record.
Thank you, Ari. We appreciate it, Ari.
Okay, Mauricio?
Yes, the next person is Loretta. One second. Loretta, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, it's Loretta Muffin, 310 Atlantic Isle. Hi, thank you. I was, I have a, I'm a physical therapist by profession, so I, you know, I'm more in tune to some of the requirements for wheelchairs and things like that. But I was wondering in the garage, are there stairs there or how does the person get from their car into the home?
So we have stairs, but we also have a, a small lift that is adjacent to the stairs. If we can show the drawing.
Well, Mauricio would have to, this is my slide, so he can't see it, but in the floor plan-
It was on the, it was on the plan, Loretta.
So Loretta, there, there is a, a small elevator lift, so it just goes-
Can you tell me what, what page? I can pull it up on screen.
Sure. That would be on slide-
There.
Slide five shows it.
Okay, one second.
So if you look on slide five, in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a little box with an X in it and the door swing. So that shows the lift. So that little door swing shows the wheelchair getting into that lift and then going up to the same level as the main floor.
Mm-hmm, okay. And is there a ramp in the front of the house at all or no ramp?
No ramp.
There is no ramp.
So that would be the only way to get into the house is through the garage?
For Mr. Pinchuk, yes.
Correct.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, it looks like a beautiful home. I, you know, the, the whole process of, of variances and asking neighbors and I, I guess I'm not thrilled with that, you know, that method. It, you know, puts the neighbors on a little bit of an awkward position. You don't want to be a bad neighbor and, you know, say, "No, you can't do that," you know. I, and I really don't know how it'll affect our home. I can't really envision it. I, I know it's going to be closer to our home. I, I don't know how it'll affect the value of our home. You know, I would imagine having a nice new home will help overall in the neighborhood, but, but just some, those are just some of my concerns. I know I can't change the way things are done, but just a little awkward, you know, this whole process, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, and now I have the other letter that I planned before.
Great.
This is the letter of objection. It comes from Norman Edelkopf, address is 244 Atlantic Isle. Says, "I noticed that an item is being placed on the April agenda regarding a series of variances being requested for the property at 318 Atlantic Isle. As a resident of Atlantic Isle, I would like to go on the record of opposing these variances, particularly the height variance. Atlantic Isle is a community of single and two-story homes that were built not to exceed the 35-foot height under our city land development ordinance. Side setbacks were provided to be 10% of the property's lot width. These standards were set to ensure proper development of our community and to my knowledge that has been adhered to with any homes built on the island. We do not need to break this policy. Years ago, when the property at 319 Atlantic Isle was being built, we had a similar outcry, but I believe the height was resolved at 35 feet. Let's not set in motion and action for monster mansions." And then we have just one more letter that we see.
Gregory Korsmer, I would like to respond to last opposite country.
Okay, Gregory, you're there. Okay. Go ahead. Just your, your name and address for the record.
Gregory Korsmer, 294 Atlantic Isle, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, 33160.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Monster mansions. They're not my words, but rather the chosen words from someone who gave and supported variance all around our city. I'm a proud resident of Sunny Isles and I trust the city administration to be working in the best interest of all residents, old and new, bringing modernity, evolution, and improvements to our city. There have been multiple adjustments to city ordinance over the years, and this is just like constitutional amendments. They need to be revisited time to time. If we're really looking to ensure safety to all, we should fix older houses that are not up to current codes. I do not wish to take away their grandfather's rights. As today, I only wish to allow a fellow neighbor to build a new, modern, safe homes for himself and Atlantic Isle, an investment from him that enhances the value of all. Now to specific objects to all objection, as my understanding. Mr. Edelkopf is not stating true facts. The side setback mentioned on objection are not correct. Since today, lot of 60-foot setback should be seven and a half. Is this correct, Claudia?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Their actual code reads that, that they need to be seven and a half feet, even though in Atlantic Avenue, the original applied, most of the lots are 60-foot.
So this is not correct statement. Several of new homes and old homes on 60-foot lots currently have six-foot grandfather's wall, few of them seven and a half, and even 319 requested and received approved variance to have five feet setback. I truly represent group of Atlantic Isle homeowners who are in favor and have no objection. Then it my understanding, we have one, only one opposing comment from someone who lives 15 houses to east of this project. Therefore, I would like to ask Mr. Edelkopf respectfully to change his words from "we do not want" into "I don't want." Also on objection, the high variance from 319 was mentioned, and it's true as they did not receive. But what objector is not saying is even more important. As 319 received approval for numerous variance over 15, plus lot coverage increased, and this gave them opportunity to build one of the most iconic and beautiful house on the island, 319 Atlantic Isle. In response to the objection, I would like to use his own word. Set in motion only good thing, if someone has approved multiple variance for a new building, against the outcry of residents of city of Sunny Isles by now calling a new, single-family home a monster? This is a matter of taste and it's very hypocritical. I live in a mansion, actually a normal house, but for me, it's my mansion, not a monster, rather a tribute and celebration of my life, work, and achievement. With this in mind, I see 318 the same way. It will be Mr. Pinchuk home, the result of his life, work, and his retirement. And house is being designed by world famous lead architect with the future that feeds his personal needs today and medically in the future. It should be not a few, not visible inches. Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, Mauricio, there's any other public comment?
No, Mayor, that was it. Unless, did I miss anything, Claudia? I think I got everyone.
All of them, yes.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much to the public for contributing your comments. And we'll start with the commission. Commissioner Goldman.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear everybody's comments first.
Um, I'm calling on you. You get to go, you get to go first.
Oh, I don't have a-
No, 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 you haven't got a privilege of picking your slot because I'm the chair. So, thank you.
I wanted to know if there's any, what precedents there have been towards side or height setbacks. So what, what has been granted in the past, if anything? Can somebody address that? What kind of, what kind of side setback or height variances have we given, if any, in Atlantic Isle?
In Atlantic Isle, sure. There have been two zoning applications and approvals that have been granted for side setbacks. The review that we did actually didn't suggest, didn't show any for height variance in the island. So we have precedent for the side setbacks.
So how tall? Because some of those homes are pretty tall. I mean, are they because of the, the floor elevation? Or they seem, it seems like some of these buildings are pretty high. Is that because of the actual elevation or?
Every house, it has to be measured from the same point, which is the crown of the road. Over the years, actually, the federal building code, it has been taking more and more height of those properties. Because right now, as Ari brought up, right now, we are at nine-foot requirements as per the federal building code. So you have to be at nine feet in comparison in the past that it has eight or seven or even lower in certain homes. So in the opposite, over the years, that had, it has been reduced in terms of the main house or main structure, the livable space for any structure.
Okay, and this elevator height, it was done as an accommodation because that, that's not the whole building, right? That's not the whole rooftop. I mean, the trellises or whatever, whatever trusses or trellis, whatever you've got. But the elevator itself, I mean, I think that's really kind of at the heart of this, right? It's, it's the, it's the height of the elevator and, and how, you know, what that looks like and what impact.
Correct. And so the elevator housing is at its maximum or its minimum, but it can be to clear the, the door to have access to the roof. And we are landscaping the entire elevator housing. And then we also set it back almost 25 feet, so it's not visible as you saw in the rendering shots. So it won't be visible.
I mean, for me, you know, it's not a white box and for me, it's a, I like the rooftop garden aspect. I mean, those side setbacks are a little, I mean, five feet isn't, isn't a lot, but the neighbors aren't objecting, right?
Yeah, we understand. And then we also only make sure to only ask for it in very small portions of the house, only in the two areas that would have the most impact to Mr. Pinchuk, right? The garage and the kitchen. And so we, we also tried to mitigate that and offset that by adding those interior courtyards and the extra landscaping to kind of offset that, improving the property as well as improving the neighborhood. Thank you.
The renderings are, the renderings are very nice.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, but we do have, we do have some precedent for, for the variances on the side setbacks at least, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. All right. That's all my comments for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Viscaro.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not hearing the, like a unanimous consent, right? We had one of the speakers saying, you know, I'm, I'm approving, but, you know, I'm uncomfortable. I don't know what impact this is going to have on my house. I also feel that variances should be issued, you know, where there, there's a, a dangerous condition or, or something structural or, but this is really just a matter of preference on a, a large lot. I mean, we have architects and designers here. I'm, I'm having a hard time imagining that they couldn't design something that could meet the, the owner's needs on the existing footprint. It's a large space. And now, and the variances are being asked, one of the neighbors sounded uncomfortable. We do have other people, you know, maybe not immediate neighbors, but there, you know, there isn't a, a unanimous consensus here, and I don't, I'm not hearing structural reasons other than, than a personal preference on what looks to me a large lot. Perhaps the, the elevator piece would be, would be something that, that we can consider given this individual's needs. But overall, you know, people come and go, structure stay. And we have to deal with, you know, with these variances as a matter of precedent down the road. I'm not comfortable. I'm not hearing, there's no other possibility here. I'm, we're hearing this would be our preference and I, I just don't think those are, I, I don't think that's, that I'm uncomfortable granting a variance on a preference rather than a structural or safety need.
So I think, I appreciate and I understand your concern. I would say a couple of things. One, you know, a home is a personal thing and, and Mr. Pinchuk has certainly chosen to add to the values, the value of the neighborhood by demolishing his house because he could certainly keep his house, his grandfathered in and it's already, those variances already, you know, being, being exceeded from what it is today. I would also say that it's a personal preference for sure. We are absolutely meeting all of the requirements for a variance. So if, if you see in my letter, our letter, we addressed all the issues where variance would be considered and things that the variant should not do, and we are not negatively impacting any of our neighbors. We are, are most likely improving the value of the neighborhood of Sunny Isles. And most importantly, I think it's about the accessibility and the quality of life of Mr. Pinchuk who's investing in this property. And in no way does it affect negatively anybody in the neighborhood. There is also precedent for the setbacks, as well as while you say it's not unanimous. We, we do have nine letters of support from neighbors as well as the, the council, the neighborhood council commission. So I think it's a pretty strong case and we have made every effort to be very, very sensitive to all the issues that would, that we would understand completely would be of a concern for you. So we ask you for your support.
I, I, I agree with you. I think you've done a wonderful job and, you know, there's, and there's no, you know, I, I always say, you know, if you don't ask- um, you know, I, I always say, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get. So I, I completely understand coming forward and, and, uh, and asking. But like I said, I'm, I'm just not, I don't see this as a, as a structural need or a, a life safety issue or a minor ask. It's not a minor ask. And we are hearing in the, in the comments, uh, you know, even though we said yes, we're not entirely comfortable. We don't know how it would impact our, our property. And I, I think, I think that there, there could be other solutions, um, that, that we can consider that wouldn't require a variance. So I'll, I'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Commissioner Lama.
Yeah, I, um, I agree with some of the comments from, from Commissioner, uh, Biscara. And Ms. Muffson, I don't know if you're still on the, on the call. Uh, question for you. I, is she to the, if I'm facing the door at the entrance of the, of the house, is she to the left or to the right?
She's to the east. She's on the left. She's to the left.
Okay, she's on the left.
Yeah, if you're facing south, the house is on the south side of the island. If you're facing south, she'll be on the left. So she, that was her garage that they showed lining up with the applicant's garage.
Okay. And right now, what's the very, I mean, what, how many feet separation do you have from one, one house to the other? From the current structure right now, from Mr. Pinchuk?
Yeah. Claudine? Claudine, do you have that?
Fourteen, yes, give me one second.
It's twenty feet. It's six on my side and, uh, uh, and fourteen from the side of the neighbor.
So the, the neighbor has fourteen feet of, of grass?
From the property line.
No, they don't, they don't have fourteen feet. No, that is incorrect. So it's six feet on three eighteen.
Uh-huh.
And I'm trying to look for, for three ten.
Yeah, because Alex, in the old days, it was ten percent of the lot. It's a sixty-foot lot. It's a six-foot setback. We increased it to seven and a half foot setback minimum, even on a sixty-foot lot. So it's more onerous now than it was before. So they have, so the house that they're in now, because it was built in the, you know, forties and fifties, like all the other houses on the island, it's a six, it's a six-foot setback.
Right, and that's a six?
So that's what the, yeah, so that's what Claudine was explaining. Net-net, it's really, you know, a foot and a half or whatever, you know, whatever.
Correct. It's a foot and a half. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If, if, if I may just for a second, from property line into Richard's...
Greg, Greg.
I, I wanted to answer a question, but it's not correct.
No, I understand, but, but, but Commissioner Lama has the floor. Okay, so hold on. Alex, if you want to hear Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, Greg, Greg, go ahead. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Alex. From property line to actually Richard's house, it's my understanding it's fourteen feet.
So from structure to structure, from exterior wall to exterior wall, it's fourteen feet?
Right now, it's fourteen plus six. Right now.
That would make sense because, so, right, because Alex, great, Richard's house is relatively new. It was built, I think, in the eighties. So he probably has a seven and a half foot setback. And the other house, maybe an eight-foot setback.
So looking at fourteen total.
Right, he's in the new regulation plus the six feet of the existing house.
It, it will, I'm sorry for interrupting. It will go from twenty feet as it's right now, as of today, into nineteen feet after house will be built.
Okay, okay.
Okay? Alex?
Yeah, I, I...
Once again, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no, it's okay. It's okay. Uh, no, well, I, I don't have any, any issues with the pool variance as long as there's no safety issues. Um, I, I believe I understand the variance with the, uh, with the elevator, uh, given the, the, the need. Um, uh, I, I personally would like to go out there and look at the property. Uh, you know, visually visualize it and see what it's gonna entail. Because I did hear from, from one of your neighbors, from Ms. Muffson, that, you know, she might be hesitant. Uh, I know that you received the letter of approval, but now it looks like there's some apprehension. So, um, I for one would probably like to go out there with, with our building department and just get a visual and get a better understanding of, of what it would entail. I'm not saying I'm opposed. I just say that I want to do my homework a little bit better. Um, we received the agenda on Friday. Tuesday I reviewed it, so I haven't had time to, to, to go out there, which I wanted to do. Uh, so that's what I would like to do and, and probably, you know, do my due diligence before. Because like what, like, like Commissioner Biscara said, once a structure is built, you know, you cannot take it down. And, um, you know, we, we've had that issue here in the city before. So, okay, yeah.
So Alex, just for the record, I don't intend to table it. So, you know, I, I think it's here, and I think we're gonna have to deal with it because, you know, the applicant showed up, their, their, their architect showed up, you know, it's on the agenda. So I don't think that we're gonna table it, but, um, but, but we'll see if we get a motion in a second, and then we'll take it from there. So.
Okay.
Okay. But thanks for your comments. Um, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have actually a lot of comments, if you don't mind. Um, yeah, I, I somewhat agree with the neighbor Loretta, where she says that this is a little bit of an awkward process, where you have to ask the neighbors. Um, because as Gregory said, who was an amazing advocate, uh, he, he really has convinced me on many things that I was not convinced about. So good for you, Mr. Pinchuk. Um, eh, it's a matter of taste, you know? And I think that perhaps, uh, uh, the, the person, Norman, who is against it, doesn't necessarily like the, the, uh, design. Um, I think it's a beautiful design. Uh, but I, going back to what we discussed prior to this meeting, our brand study was about, uh, you know, bright, beautiful, uh, sleek, modern, uh, way forward for our community. And so while I understand, uh, Commissioner Lama's hesitation in saying he wants to go and look at the property, um, I don't really think that that's for us necessarily to do. That's what we have staff for. So, you know, Claudia, I want to kind of put you on the spot. I know that there's no objection, but is there a recommendation here? Uh, and if, if we're, if we're discussing this variance, should we potentially, you know, change it so that it's fair for everyone, so that every single time someone wants to build a new house, they don't have to, um, as Loretta said, have to ask their neighbors so that it's standard? So what, what does staff say as far as the, the variances? Specifically the height, I think, is, is more important than everything else.
Sure. Before we move on into that, uh, Mauricio, uh, can I share some pictures? Uh, because we do have pictures of the property, and I think they depict, you know, the reality already, if I may.
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, I, I would...
Okay, um, I'm going to share my screen right now. Sorry, give me one second.
I have a few.
Can you see the screen now?
Loading.
Okay.
So you're...
Can you see the picture? This is actually the front now. Can you see it now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is the property. This is three eighteen. You can see it over here in the mailbox. And then I'm going to show you two more images of actually Mrs. Muffson's side. And then I can show you Ben Mac's side with asking. This is P D F, what other picture we want to place. Yeah, and the final section, um, final package. Can you see also this side? Okay, so the yellow house is Mrs. Muffson's house. Uh, so they, they have a pretty large setback. Uh, probably most likely where the palms are located is where the property lines, um, is. Um, so you can see that the older house, Mrs. Pinchuk's house, is closer to the property line because it's an older home. Mrs. Muffson, it's a, it's a newer home. Um, so you can see, um, that separation. And then to the other side is the house to... I'm sorry, I'm going to try to bring a PDF. There we go. Where it's going to be easier to go and show you the pictures. So you can have a better context. There we go. Can you see it there? So this is the front. This is, um, to the east, and this is to the west. So you can see that to the west of the property, um, I think this is Mr. Ortiz's house is most likely closer to that area. So that is the context where the house is going to be located. Um, you can see that the current house at three eighteen, um, it's, it's an older house, is probably less than, um, twenty feet or maybe a fifteen-feet height. Um, so the code allows to go to, you know, thirty-five. It's going to be most likely something similar to Mrs. Muffon, Muffson, uh, property height, maybe, um, up to that area where, you know, the, the roof is located right here. Um, let me see, we didn't take a full pictures of, um, Mr. Ortiz's house because it can show you, um, the height. So currently, there are several houses in the island, um, that they are reaching that height of thirty-five. Uh, some recent ones, as Mr. Stager developed, or other houses across the street, uh, that they have thirty-five. Uh, four feet and ten inches, that is the request of the variance for the height. Um, so it's less than my height, that what they're requesting.
But that's only for the elevator, correct, Claudine?
That is for the elevator and the trellises or trussiveses. So there are certain just elements. It's not entire structure that is being elevated, uh, by, you know, by thirty-five feet.
Right, so back to my, my on-the-spot question. Would, would you say, I know that the, the, what you presented is no objection. But based on, on what you have presented, would you recommend it?
If, if we have to go through the standards of review for a variance, it's very hard to, uh, recommend a variance because we are limited to a hardship. However, in this case, if the hardship is a health condition, uh, for the applicant that in the future wants to have access to that rooftop element, because probably he's going to be, you know, wheelchair-bounded, um, probably the height setback is the one that is most likely to benefit him because of the hardship that he is presenting at this point.
Okay, so it, eh, for, for the designers, is it, you, you had mentioned in your presentation that the, the trellises are removable. Does that mean that, uh, potentially that they would, they could be off the table for now, and it would just be the elevator?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, eh, and like Commissioner Goldman, I love the idea of, of a garden on the roof. I, I wish we all did that. Um, it's amazing. And I will tell you, I spoke to, uh, the resident who doesn't even live in Atlantic Isle, and her response to me was, if I had the money, I would do the same thing.
Good for the world, right? It adds the oxygen. It's really good for the earth, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I think that to, to Gregory's point, the, the, the impact to the neighborhood will, will be positive. Um, the, 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 the kind of investments that Mr. Pinchuk and his family are making is, is imagining substantial. Uh, do you have, I don't know if I saw this in the presentation, uh, is, is there a timeline for the construction? I know it was expedited, expedited construction, but...
No.
There is, there isn't. Okay.
No, yet.
Not yet. Okay. Um, yeah, I, I think that potentially certainly not here, but, uh, back to my, uh, earlier point. If, if we're going to be granting variances, uh, because of these sort of reasons, perhaps we should revisit the, the rules that we have for, for setbacks and potentially elevators. Uh, because I imagine there'll be other people that are gonna be building, uh, new houses that may require, have the same need. So, uh, yeah, with that, the, the house is, is beautiful. It's my taste, but that's not why I think, you know, I think that the, the concept is great, the open, I love the open concept. And, um, yeah, very nice.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, one of the very few benefits of being mayor is I get to go last. So, and sorry, Commissioner Goldman, I didn't let you go last.
It's, it's, it wouldn't be the first time.
No, no, it wouldn't be the first time. So, um, okay, so let me go through. First of all, just for the record, I live four houses to the west. So I will drive by this house for the rest of my days, okay? So that's just, so I'm the only one on the commission that lives on that island, and so it probably hits closest to home for me. Um, and, you know, and I've clearly, you know, my neighbors have called me to speak about this and, you know, and, um, and, you know, I am generally supportive of things in the single-family neighborhoods when the neighbors generally agree. You don't always get them a hundred percent to agree, but I'm generally supportive. Let's go through this one in a little bit more detail. So first of all, I like the architecture, the cantilever, Allah Enrique Norton, you know, very nice. You know, I, I happen to have met Enrique Norton. He's a great architect, and I've seen a lot of his buildings in the back. I see the back piece, you've got the cantilever, you know, coming out of the back of the building, and that's what it reminds me of. Okay. Um, so the side setbacks are, um, are, again, um, I think that they're de minimis in the sense of they're, they're isolated, as, as the architects pointed out. Um, you know, um, I do agree with Loretta. I mean, I've known Loretta and Richard for thirty years. They're my dear friends. They're my dear neighbors. I mean, you know, uh, and so, um, eh, but also Loretta's right. I mean, you know, if you're, it, it puts you on the spot when your neighbor, or when your potential neighbor calls and says, hey, will you sign this? Because, you know, I had to do it for my wall. I have a wall in front of my house because people used to walk up and take pictures in my courtyard, and we'd find people on the property all the time. So finally, and this is long before I was a mayor, but finally we had to put a wall up, and I had to get a variance to put my wall up. And I went to my neighbors and knocked on the door and showed them the plans and said, please, will you approve my wall? You know, and they did. But Loretta's right. It puts you on the spot, and it makes you uncomfortable. And so I think at times what might happen is that, you know, you might not, you might feel compelled to be a good neighbor as opposed to looking out for your own best economic interest or even, you know, or, or just, or just, you know, you just might have a visceral reaction. You don't like something, you know? So, um, so I, I, um, you know, I, I feel for Loretta. Um, I know a little bit about real estate. I do not think it will diminish your property value, okay? I think this is an extraordinary house. I think it's gonna be a very, very expensive build, and I think it will elevate the rest of the values on the island as other houses of this ilk have done, you know? Um, we now have houses on the island that have, you know, exceeded five and six million dollars in value. So that's a, you know, that's a good thing. Um, so let's talk about height. I think we're gonna have to revisit our code in relatively short order because as we keep saying, as we keep raising the first floor elevation to mitigate sea level rise and these considerations, we're not raising the height. So used to be able to build at five or six feet, now it's nine feet, but we're saying the cap is still thirty-five feet. So as much as, you know, as much as that may try to keep a character of a neighborhood, it's pretty unfair to the property owner because basically what we're saying is you gotta keep squeezing, you gotta keep squeezing the height. And so, um, so this is an issue I think we're gonna have to address eventually anyway. And regarding the elevator shaft, not in the la, in, in the too distant past, we had height variances for our commercial building or our, 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 um, multifamily buildings throughout the city, and you could put the mechanical on top of the height. Claudine, when did we change that? A few years back, remember?
Yes.
So, so my point is, if you had a two-hundred-foot height variance, you were allowed to stack the mechanical on top of the two-hundred feet. So the, not the height variance, I'm sorry, height limitation. So in other words, you, you could design your building to take full advantage of the two-hundred feet, and then you could stick the mechanical on, on top of the two-hundred feet, and it wasn't counted against you for that. In this case, they're not asking for another floor. They're asking for, you know, four and a half feet for an elevator for a personal condition. So I don't, I, I just, you know, I, I, I don't see the difficulty in that. I also don't believe that that difference is gonna be, be material to the character of the neighborhood for the height of that house. That that difference is going to be be material to the character of the neighborhood for the height of that house. And remember, I have to drive by it every day for the rest of my life and look at it, so. Believe me, if I was critical, I would tell you, so. You know, so. Because, you know, you know, I I'm I'm in Commissioner Viscara's camp usually. You better have a damn good reason for a variance, and I think everybody knows that. And, you know, when I was on the commission with Mayor Edelcup, it's ironic because Mayor Edelcup never saw a variance he didn't like on the on the east side of Collins. And I often, him and I often butted heads on variances, you know, on the east side of Collins. Not the least of which is when you drive off our our island, the Cyan Building, which has like zero side setback. It's called the VE Zone, something they concocted for one meeting, so that developer could get a zero setback building. And so, 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 you know, again, I feel like. The last thing I want to say is. A landscaped rooftop. In a city like ours that has a lot of high buildings is a beautiful thing. Because when you look out from your balcony, you're not looking down on a bunch of rooftiles. You're looking down on a landscaped rooftop. And so this is actually a big trend in urban development in larger cities where you have a lot of different building heights, you know. And frankly, there were people in, you know, in my time that were advocating. That we start to make that a requirement for our large residential buildings. So you're not looking down at a bunch of mechanical, you know, you know, you know, or or at the very least that the mechanical is. Is 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 landscaped or beautified somehow, so I think again. I think the applicant, you know, has basically done all they can do in this case to, you know, to make this as palatable as possible. I think, you know, again. You know, clearly, you know, the house is ADA compatible. And a lot of these different features in the house are to accommodate that. I do agree with Commissioner Viscara, look, you, they could probably, you know, cram it into, you know, two and a half feet less. On these two corners of the house and make it work if they really want to. But again, I feel a residential variance is more about the neighbors and I don't, I don't think that this is going to be. You know, we're not asking for, you know, ten feet and another twenty feet height and another floor. I think that these that these variances are pretty de minimis relative to the to the house that's going to get built. And relative to the accommodation that Mr. Pinchuk needs for his residence, so. I think you can see what side on this one I'm falling on, and those are my comments. So with that, I will ask for a motion. Okay, Vice Mayor, motion, I'm assuming it's a motion to approve, correct? Okay, okay, so we have a motion to approve, do I have a second? No, no one wants to second it? Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Goldman. Is this a voice vote, Mauricio? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Roll call.
Roll call. Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Goldman? Commissioner Lama?
It would be a tough spot. I would still like to visually see it out there, but I would say yes, given that it's only a portion on each side. I I I'm still concerned that we're, you know, setting a precedent. But it it's something that we as a city will need to really discuss. Because obviously, there clearly needs to be a need, it looks like there's a there's a need in this case. I know Commissioner Viscara might 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 think otherwise. But yes, yeah, I say yes.
Okay, that's why you make the big bucks, Alex. All right.
Vice Mayor Spatchen?
Yes, the the rooftop garden and and Gregory is what, you know, really, really sold me, this is a, it's gonna be beautiful, so yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
If this is an all or nothing, where we have to accept all the variances or none, I'm gonna be a no, I do think it's a beautiful idea. I would have been okay with, you know, keeping the footprint and with the elevator. But if I have to go all or nothing, I have to be a no, but it's it's a beautiful project and I'm sure it'll it'll. Enhance the the neighborhood and and do all the things that the mayor said, so.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The application is approved, portable.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Pinchuk. Claudine, your firm, beautiful design, thank you very much, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
All right. Very good, okay, we move on to resolutions, or no, what else do we have on?
Ordinances.
Okay, we got ordinances, okay, here we go, yeah. I I gotta turn the page, I got I got on the back of my page. Okay, ordinances for first reading, we will move on to item seven A.
Seven A is an ordinance of the City Commissioner of the City of San Diego, Florida. Amending ordinance number twenty twenty five fifty six, including budget amendment number DA twenty twenty one dash zero one. To the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the twenty 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 one fiscal year. General Fund, Street Maintenance and Construction Fund, Building Fund, Public Art Trust Fund. Capital Projects Fund, Stormwater Fund, and Stormwater Capital Fund. Providing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement determined conditions of this ordinance. Right for an effective date, this is first reading, and I will bring up Tiffany.
Okay, who's up on this one?
This is Tiffany, she's coming up on.
Okay, is it Ed or?
It's either the city manager or Tiffany.
It's me.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, Tiffany.
Hi.
All yours. It said report to the city attorney, so so they fooled me again.
The court's fault.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. This is our first budget amendment of the fiscal year, which is pretty standard. This is needed in order to record our fund balance carryovers from nine thirty twenty 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 from prior fiscal year. Record our purchase order carryovers, transfer funds from our HR department to the respective departments for the twenty twenty one COLA increase. And then to transfer funds to the police department for the PBA step. Plan raises, to also transfer funds from our planning and zoning department to our code. And parking compliance department for to add for part time code and parking. Compliance officers, to transfer funds from the general fund to the Public Art Trust Fund. For the cultural master plan consultant. And to transfer funds from the Golden Shores Pump Station Project to what's now shown as the citywide drainage wells. But will be the Central Island Drainage Project. Transfer four hundred and fifty thousand to that project. To record individual capital project carryovers in both the Capital Projects Fund. And the Stormwater Capital Fund, and then finally to record transfers in. From the general fund to cover PO. Carryovers, miscellaneous project revenue and the deferral of the corner house promissory note.
Okay, I'm I'm glad that you're keeping track of it all, that's all I can say. Is there any questions for, is there any public comments on this, Mauricio?
Yes, there's one comment. You, your name and address for the record, please.
Jude, you need to come off mute. It looks like you, you're you're still on mute, you're gonna, can 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 you unmute your? Bottom left of your screen if you're on a, if you're on a PC, there you go.
Okay, I did, I I don't have any comment, I just want Mauricio to talk clear and slow because he can get ticket, he's very fast. So I don't.
Okay, Mauricio. Okay, Jude, the good news is I I can tell him to do that. Mauricio, clear and slow, thank you, Jude. Okay, Mauricio, are there any other public speakers?
None, Mayor.
That was clear and slow, thank you. Okay, so public hearing is closed, Mauricio, are there any comments from the commission on this item? Okay, with that, I will take a, no, Commissioner Goldman, go ahead.
City Manager and I have spoken about this, I'm very happy to see, you know, increased emphasis on the. The pumps, the two two proposed pump stations for the Center Island, I think it's a. Major and important and significant development and our stormwater. Drainage and I'm very happy to see all this happening. Very positive.
Well, well, then you, well, then you can, Vice Mayor, I was gonna say you could make the motion, but.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to say that I very much in support and increases for our police department, they've been doing a phenomenal job and. They deserve everything, as well as the. Parking code and enforcement, that's so important, as we all know. I just want to get some clarification regarding the pump station because I agree with Commissioner Goldman that we we need to work on our drainage, but the forty. Four hundred fifty thousand moving from Golden Shores, Chris, can you just explain how that's possible because? Before there was an issue, but if you could just clarify, you and I have spoken about it, but if you can clarify for those that are listening. Why we're able to do that.
Well, if you recall during the budget process during the pandemic. And the shortfall of two million dollars in our operating fund and six million in our capital fund. I evaluated all the projects that we were going to be working on in the in the near future. And I realized that I can make all the improvements necessary. In the Golden Shores Pump Station that we've been working on actually for close to a couple of years now. And do that without all the other work that was proposed as a major project for the rebuild of that pump station. There's aesthetics, there's a number of things, so we boiled it down to all the important things. The important things, we've rebuilt the pumps, we've bought emergency backup portable pumps. Four of them, if I'm correct now, for the city. We're going to be upgrading the generator, its fuel capacity and the automatic systems that will make it come on when the. Power goes out if we have an outage that wore out literally years ago. So we have the money to do all that. And then we still have a chunk of money that was left for a total rehab of the station and the area around it. So the, as we also mentioned earlier, was I'm going to address the Central Island area. Obviously, since I left the city in two thousand and five and even with the attempts I've made to. Improve the wells that were put in at some point around two thousand and seven or eight, I think it was. It has not succeeded, we 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 know that now. The only real way to do it is the way that was planned back in two thousand and one. Was to do the same thing we have in Golden Shores Pump Station. It's a little bit different as Central Island area, there's not enough property to build an above ground. You know, structure the size of what we have in Golden Shores. So the engineers that we have recently procured through, we shortlisted. I I'm been, I'm I'm in discussions with the the firm that did the planning for one seventy fourth street. Other than Golden Shores back twenty years ago, the most successful drainage. Project that was substantial that we've had in recent years has been the success on one seventy fourth street. We haven't had flooding flooding since we did that project. Many of you remember Jerry Jerry Goodman coming to the. To the commission meetings about one seventy fourth street and that area, North Bay Road, what he was talking about was the Central Island area and one seventy fourth. Well, he got to see the one seventy fourth street get fully. Improved, I mean, I I'm kind of in shock too that that has not had any flooding. We're going to try to take that attempt and split it into two underground pump stations, which was the original plan many years ago. We're going to go back to it and I believe we will make a substantial improvement in that area. It's only remaining area that we have substantial flooding in.
Thank you for that thorough explanation. And and more code enforcement, so.
And more code enforcement.
We need, we need parking and code, 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 right?
Yes.
I'll be happy to move, I'll move, I'll move.
Okay, so I have a mo- motion by Commissioner Goldman, a second by the Vice Mayor. And then I believe this is an ordinance, so it's it's a roll call.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spatchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw? The ordinance passes on first reading, second reading is scheduled for May twenty.
Yeah, okay, and Mauricio, I see Jerry and Jody have their hand up, but I know it went up after I closed the public hearing. And we're trying to kind of adhere to the adhere to the public hearing rules today, so so Jerry and Jody, we didn't ignore you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item nine.
Nine A is an ordinance of the City Commissioner of the City of San Diego, Florida, amending chapter one thirty five of the city's code of ordinances. Title of construction sites, torment section one thirty five dash two. Provide for maintenance standards previously contained in section one twelve dash four D. Adding requirements for owners and contractors in response to severe weather advisories. Creating Article Three, construction fences by creating a new section one thirty five dash six. To incorporate those provisions previously contained in section two sixty five dash sixty three point three. Providing for additional regulations and standards. Amending section two twelve dash four of the city's code of ordinances. Property maintenance to repeal sections C and D relating to vacant lot and construction site maintenance. Amending chapter two fifty three, titled vacant lots, to include those provisions previously contained in section two twelve. Dash four C and providing for additional fencing standards. Providing for amortization of market formities. Repeating section two sixty five dash sixty three point three, titled construction fencing. Providing for repealer, providing for survivability, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date, this is second and final reading.
Okay, who's up on this one, Chris, is it you?
I can start if you like.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Commissioners, as you can see from the title of this, when we were doing, working with Claudia to come up with a new fence manual. We noticed that there are various fencing requirements throughout the code. Part of this is trying to consolidate those fencing requirements and adopting a fence manual. For minimum standards for fences, for construction sites and for open locks. And so this is second reading, if Claudia has anything else to add, she could certainly chime in.
Just something quick, just want to point out that we have an amortization of ninety days. Provided so that those properties that they're currently have, they will currently have. Not to code, any fences, they have a chance actually to bring it up to code, so. That's what I want to bring up.
So there's a transition period, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
Got it, okay, understood. Mauricio, public hearings open, any comments from the public?
No, Mayor, none.
Okay, public hearing is closed, and with that, I'll take any comments from the commission on second reading. Okay, hearing none, I will take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Goldman, second by by Commissioner Lama, and again, this is a roll call.
Vice Mauricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman? Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Okay, thank you, that concludes our ordinances for this evening, and we move on to resolutions, so let's go to item ten A.
Ten A is a resolution approving an agreement with Government Jobs Inc. doing business as NeoGov to provide workforce management solutions. And this is a report by our HR Director, in one second. Whenever you're ready, Yael.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. NeoGov is the online software services we currently utilize for employment recruitment of our city position. Specifically, this online software is used to post open city positions. Track applicants as well as for onboarding of new hires amongst other things. The contractor bringing forward tonight for your approval will lock in the negotiated rate. Subscription rate for the next five years in lieu of renewing each year at an annual amount determined by NeoGov.
Okay, any public comment on this item, Mauricio?
None.
Okay, public hearing is closed, commission, any questions for Yael? Okay, pretty cut and dry, do I hear a motion approved? Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Lama, all in favor? Aye? Motion carries, okay, thank you, Yael.
Thank you.
All right, stay well. All right, stay well, all right, item ten B.
Ten B is a resolution approving the issuance of a purchase order to Wex Bank for the purchase of unletted fuel using a fuel card program.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, um, we've, you're probably sick of hearing of Wex Card. We have come back to you a few times in the last six months, um, waiting for the state to renew. They finally signed a contract with Wex Bank, um, we've used them before, very pleased with their service and we will be locking in this contract until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So we're requesting an, um, approval to issue the purchase order in the amount of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually based on what you allocated in the budget.
Understood, Mauricio, are there any public comments on item ten B?
None.
Okay, public hearing is closed, any comments from the commission? On the use of a Wex Card, no, okay, do I hear a motion approved? Uh, Commissioner Goldman, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Viscara, all in favor? Aye? Okay, motion carries. Mauricio, item ten C. Thank you, Susan.
Ten C is a resolution requesting waiver of the bidding requirements set forth in chapter sixty-two of the city code, approving a first amendment to the agreement with Jordan Enterprises for inspection and preventive maintenance services for the HVAC equipment located in the government center.
So, a couple of years ago, we replaced the chiller in this building, government center, with Jordan Mechanical through a bid. Um, the maintenance for that, um, once their, what was included in that bid expired, last year we entered into an agreement with them, it was under fifty thousand dollars, so it did not come to you, it's a maintenance agreement. We are requesting to waive the bid procedure because they are the installers and it will secure a warranty with them. And this year, adding the second year for the renewal will take us over fifty thousand dollars. So we're requesting, um, the first amendment with Jordan Mechanical.
Okay, um, any comments from the public, Mauricio?
None, Mayor.
Okay, public hearing is closed, any comments from the commission? Okay, do I hear a motion approved? Motion by Commissioner Goldman? Second by Commissioner Lama, all in favor? Aye? Aye, motion carries, thank you, thank you, Susan, um, item ten D.
Ten D is a resolution appointing Commissioner Alex Lama as the city's delegate to the Miami-Dade League of Cities and Commissioner Jennifer Viscara as the alternate to attend meetings from May twenty twenty-one through May twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I doubt if there's any commission, any comments from the public on this one. Um, so, any comments from the commission? You know, I appreciate Alex and, okay, Jennifer, go ahead.
I was just gonna go along those lines, I mean, Alex, um, did a great job last year. He had a, a lot of non-exciting COVID coping, uh, meetings to, to attend and he did a great job keeping us informed, I, and I, um, just wanted to, uh, to recognize him for that and, and, uh, you know, here goes the next year, I think, keep at it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Alex, and Alex reported back a lot too. I mean, I think, um, as these various edicts were handed down from the county, you know, Alex really kept us informed and, um, you know, took his responsibility as a liaison to, you know, to the league, you know, very, very seriously, so, um, thanks, Alex, and, um, and thanks, thanks Jennifer for backing him up.
Thank you.
So, okay.
I really appreciate it.
Good, great, um, do I hear a motion approved, Vice Mayor, or do you want to speak? You want to speak, okay, motion by Vice Mayor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, second, second by Commissioner Viscara, all in favor? Aye? Okay, motion carries, thanks, thanks again, Alex and Jennifer. Item ten E.
Ten E is a resolution declaring April as water conservation month in the city of Sunny Hills Beach and supporting the National Whelan Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation.
Now we're talking, here we go, Commissioner Goldman.
So I know we're in the middle of the month, but, um, certainly, uh, it's important to, again, you know, continue this, uh, this trend of, of thought and action on our, on, on, throughout the city and on our behalf as elected here. I'm just gonna read from the, from this, the statement, the state of Florida has designated April as water conservation month, recognizing the importance of conserving this precious resource. City Commission equally recognizes the importance of high-quality drinking water, the public's health, safety and welfare. By conserving our water resources, we're also saving money, the more we preserve, the longer our water supply will last. With the encouragement of the city, residents may register their participation in the city's challenge online by making simple pledges to decrease their water use and to reduce pollution for the period of one year, thereby assisting the city to apply state and federal water conservation strategies and to target mandated repub- reductions. So, it's been said before, but I'll, uh, reiterate, I think that water and water resources and water supply and availability, that is the great, great environmental issue of the coming generations, I think that we'll be talking more and more about that and I think that, again, we need to posture and, and, and really understand the importance of, of water conservation efforts, so this is really just a, a resolution in, in support of that and to really, you know, talk about it and elevate this discussion at the, at the municipal level.
None, Mayor, and you're muted. Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry, so, see, I'm still not Zoom etiquette, um, you know, I, I don't have my Zoom etiquette batten down. Um, okay, public hearing is closed, any comments from the commission regarding this resolution? Okay, do I hear a motion approved, Commissioner Goldman? Okay, second by Com- by Vice Mayor, all in favor? Aye? Okay. Water is being conserved and with, with North Miami Beach managing our water supply, we better conserve, so, um, okay, item ten F.
Ten F is a resolution approving a lease agreement slash airspace agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for the property located under the Lehman Causeway Bridge for parking and other public purpose, for other public use purposes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, the city has been leasing the Lehman Causeway, uh, since nineteen ninety-nine from the Florida Department of Transportation. Uh, so tonight we're seeking an extension into the one-year lease agreement term that is currently available under resolution two thousand eleven dash one six ninety-two. Uh, the terms and conditions, uh, remain the same as to the use of the property and as to the shared parking revenues agreement.
Okay, Mauricio, any public comment on this item?
None, Mayor.
None, public hearing is closed, any comments from the commission? Yep, Vice Mayor?
Um, Claudia, I didn't ask you this before, but do you, uh, offhand know what the revenue is for us? The parking revenue that we have annually, not, not counting last year, but typically?
The amount of, um, money or the share agreement that we have with the state?
Which one? Well, either or both, yeah.
We have sixty percent we keep and we send forty percent to the state.
Okay, you don't know how much it is?
It's the funny available, not from the top of my mind.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
Mayor, you're muted again.
Uh, you're, you're muted.
You're muted again.
Um, um, it's killing me tonight, um, I think it was low hundreds of thousands, Vice Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, but I don't, I, I don't recall the exact number. Um, okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve. A motion by the Vice Mayor, do I hear a second, second by Commissioner Lama, all in favor? Aye? Okay, motion carries and that is the end of our resolutions tonight, so thank you, Claudia. Um, we move on to discussion items, okay, and item twelve A, Commissioner Goldman.
Okay, so.
You're on mute.
So, this is really, uh, this is, uh, the request to, uh, take our e-committed program, uh, one step further. This is sort of an incremental move on the part of the city to really codify what our existing, uh, practices, uh, on sustainable, uh, procurement. Uh, the whole e-committed program and platform, um, it's a number of things, it's also, it's not only the reduction of, uh, single-use plastics, um, it's not only the prohibition on polystyrene, it's also adaptation measures and the fl- the flooding and the, the, the work that we're doing on that level. So, uh, many municipalities have adopted what's called a sustainability plan or sustainability action plan, for example, Miami Beach, uh, um, Coral Gables has a very sophisticated plan, um, others, and I think it's really a way for us to kind of put, put the pedal to the metal and say, okay, what are, what, what are we doing and how can we kind of put it together and maybe there are things in the, in the future that we can strive towards or try to achieve. So I've pulled, uh, some of these, um, sustainability plans from some of the, uh, neighboring municipalities and I'd like to see us really, you know, really put down on paper and really think about how can we be, uh, more green, more sustainable? How can we further, you know, have a, a policy in place to really kind of, uh, elevate, you know? Really, ultimately, it's about our carbon footprint and, and, and about our environmental consciousness. So, uh, for me, it's, again, the next step in the evolution of the, the e-committed program and in the, in the city and whether that's the electric charging stations or so forth, it's just a way of putting together a coherent, a little bit of a, of a plan and putting that in place. So, uh, city manager and I have discussed this and we've talked about it over the years, so I'm hoping that, you know, we can have a more coherent, uh, 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 and a written platform for, for something like that.
Okay, any comments, um, from the commission? Okay, um, the only thing I would add is, we, Commissioner Goldman, if you can go on mute, it'd be great. It's feeding back on me, so, okay, um, is, that, that's okay. Um, so, yeah, the only thing that I would add is that, um, uh, I, I just like to, you know, I'd like to understand in more detail, um, what we're talking about and what the cost is because sometimes, um, you know, some of these programs can be very far-reaching and I'm not saying that they're not meaningful, but sometimes they're, they're very onerous and very costly and they may be ahead of their time, certain out, certain aspects of it, I'm not saying all of it. So I agree with it in principle, but I would like, you know, I would like the manager, um, you know, if you've got a host of initiatives that you think you want to set forth, Commissioner Goldman, you know, I'd like to see you work with the manager and the staff and let's kind of put a, put a budget to it be, and, and understand, you know, you know, what it'll cost and, and then, you know, what, like, I, I think the great example was like Commissioner Viscara, somebody said that, you know, they, they can't open up the to- they can't get a toner from HP because it's got styrofoam in it and then all of a sudden you, you can't get toner for your copiers, you know, that kind of a thing. I know that's not your intent, but sometimes if we, if we reach too far and too aggressively, too quickly, we end up with unintended consequences, that's all I'm saying. So I, I like to, um, so I, that's my issue with the, with the, with the, with the idea in principle, go ahead.
Which, which one? You go ahead, Commissioner, first, you're on mute, by the way.
Okay, all right.
I, I think the point is, we've, we've, we've had a lot of staff discussion, conference meetings and so forth about how can we be more green or e-committed, right? And we've had already, we've, we've done informally what I'd like to see more formalized. I think we have an excellent person on staff who has the, the requisite capability and skills to put something together without us, we're not, the, the, the intent here was not to hire an, an outside consultant like we did for the transportation plan and spend a quarter of a million or whatever it costs. The intent is to really kind of codify and solidify what is our, our practice and maybe we can reach out and think about just putting us to the task of thinking about you know, what is, what is it in our fleet or what is it in our flooding mapping? Or what are we doing in terms of, you know, our, at the employee level about single-use plastics or so forth, just to, just to come up with a little bit of a rough. So the, the idea is not to spend on consultants, I think the idea is to put it within the requisite expertise of, you know, what we have exist, in our existing staff. Chris, you go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we, we, we have discussed it and, um, we, we, we are gonna, you know, take on the task in my office. Um, Evelyn in my office, as you may know, is PhD and this is, um, right up her, uh, her field and, uh, she's, uh, you know, interested i- in this type of thing. And, um, I think we can, I think we can do a pretty good job in-house of identifying of, um, uh, determining, you know, what we can do, what we are doing and as you say, what is onerous and what kind of costs might be involved in it. Um, I, I think we can take that on, it's, it's, it's an interesting project, we've gone away with it. Uh, you know, we've done a number, there's, there's a lot of things that we have done, as we gather them together, we're gonna find, you know, we're gonna realize that. And, and I've talked to Commissioner Goldman about it, uh, before, so.
Great, and, and just to be clear, I never said the word consultant, okay? I never said consultant, but since, since we're, since we're, since we're, um, since we're talking about, you know, all the fives, what I'm saying is stratify, you know, stratify, um, in detail what we're talking about and I think that's, if you have the resource to do it, great, because that's, because that's what I'm trying to understand. I'm just trying to understand, um, you know, what would be affected and, and how it would be affected and make sure that it's cost-effective, so, okay. Yeah, you're on mute, Dana.
I, I, and, and I'm not, I'm looking for kind of, I think, a minimal and pragmatic and realistic output at the first rung, but I'd be happy to liaison, liaise with this, with this effort. I'm obviously an envi- very pro-environmental commissioner, I believe very much in the carbon footprint and, uh, the stewardship of our city and at every, every entity's responsibility to think about these things. So I'd be happy to, whatever role that I can play, I certainly feel like if we have the requisite, uh, capability and expertise and we don't have overly ambitious expectations, it's certainly something that we can accomplish in-house and, and have a document, that's a living document, right? Something that we can, maybe it will live and grow beyond, you know, just this year as it can be expanded, but I think it's just, I think it's a good fit and it's a good time in our history and it's a good, it's just a good elevation of our existing process and, and, and that's, that's why I think it's just, it's, it's the right moment to be pursuing this.
Commissioner Goldman? So let's ta- let's ta- take a whack at it, Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that, uh, Commissioner Goldman, can you share some of the information that you've pulled from other municipalities? I'd like to see what, what some other cities are, are doing.
Absolutely, I mean, it's from the basic, uh, different cities approach it in different ways, but it's from the very basic elemental, city of Miami Beach, they have a resiliency program and they, but they have a very basic thirty-some odd page document, then you have the much more sophisticated, like I have here Coral Gables, where they had an outside consultant and Howlandale, I think, also has a very good model for this. I think Howlandale, we can learn a lot from, uh, you know, what they've done and, uh, I think we can, uh, I'd, I'd love to be able to share the Howlandale, uh, document in particular because I think these all provide good thought and good analysis and a good baseline. So absolutely, we should share and then, you know, as this grows, we can have additional conversations about, you know, you know, things that, you know, we exist, we propose and so forth. Um, but absolutely, I'll, I'll, I'll send it out. And I printed it out specifically for this particular meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, oh, Commissioner Vice Mayor?
I, I just wanted to say quickly that, uh, yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Goldman that we can move forward, um, and, and do more and I think that I, I really want to acknowledge the city manager and, and the staff because they've been doing it without us pushing them to and I think it's because we all are very understanding of what's happening around us. Uh, you know, anything that we do here, uh, affects, uh, the people next to us, the city next to us. With Miami Beach, I, my only comment about that is that they have, uh, uh, I believe they have a head of resiliency, so they have a very large. have a head of resiliency. So, they have a very large staff to be able to do something like this. So, while I agree with you, Commissioner Goldman, that we should be doing something, I also agree with the, the mayor that not at the sake of using more resources to try to get, to save some resources. So, yeah, I mean, Chris, whatever you're doing, you know, I totally support that as well.
My only comment on this.
Okay.
If I, if I, so I'm commenting, and that is, all right, we'll see how it unfolds. But I generally speaking on these matters related to what we do internally, I, I feel very strongly that we should keep things as a matter of policy to maintain the flexibility as opposed to turning them into ordinances, which I don't know if that's the, the plan. But I, I would encourage us to keep that, this as, as an internal policy issue. Think conditions change, vendors change, you know, whatever, things happen. And it's nice to have the flexibility to be able to pivot when things happen. If you create ordinances, then you're kind of locked into those things. And it makes it more difficult to, to be flexible.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great point. So, I, I think what we're seeing here is, you know, staff has guidance, you know, like to, to Vice Mayor's point, staff's already doing some things. And I think that Commissioner Goldman's saying, you know, let's, let's amp it up a little bit. And I'm saying, I'm fine with the amping as long as, as long as it doesn't get, you know, as long as it doesn't break our eardrums. So, but, so I think we go from there. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Goldman. And let's go on to item 12B, beach litter.
Thanks, everyone, for your support. I think we'll be happy with, you know, with, with this, with, with the output. I think it's a great, it's a great project for Evelyn. And I'm just, I'm, I'm really excited to see us take it to the next level. Okay. Beach litter. So, this is something that has come up, especially, you know, in the fall. I've noticed that we have a great initiative by one of our residents, actually, a high school student who does these beach cleanups, you know, once a week in this, in the Newport area. But we certainly, it's, it's pretty obvious to everyone here that, you know, we've grown substantially. We have all this high-rise development. Probably we have double the amount of beachgoers that, that, that we did before. We have transient guests, we have hotel guests. And, you know, we have litter. And in fact, the city manager even mentioned it when we talked about it a couple of months ago, that the amount of, you know, refuse or stuff has doubled. So, for me, as much as I applaud, you know, beach cleanups, I, I question as to, you know, is that, is that the solution or is that the best kind of direction? I mean, yes, do we have a county service that cleans up the beach? Yes. Do we have, are they garbage collectors? Or do they actually go and pick up piece by piece? But we have to be concerned about the growth in litter on our beaches. So, I asked this question to the city, and I asked this to my fellow commissioners, can we be doing more as a city and as a governing body to deal with beach litter? I've heard a lot of comments, you see it, it's growing, it's so forth, I see it. And is there, is there a better way to share the responsibility for dealing with the litter? So, I've posed this question internally. Do we need more signage? Is it code? Is it, what will it take? Do we have to share this responsibility in certain areas? But, you know, what are we observing? We've noticed it. Is there more that we can be doing about this? And I've had this conversation with Stan, and I was hoping that Stan or Susan could participate in this discussion, because I think it's a worthy discussion. Our greatest asset, obviously, is the city, is really, besides our people, of course, is really our beachfront and our beach. So, this litter problem exists and it's not going away. And as we continue to grow, for me, it's, it's something that I'd like to see us have a conversation or a discussion about. So, I don't know. Chris, Dan, Susan?
Look, I think that the most important people that know what's going on on the beach is our ocean rescue. And I think we should let them put their observations. I've specifically asked them over the past couple of weeks to, to daily check it. And it's not that they don't do that daily. But I think it would be wise to get their observations and their opinion and start with that, because they, they are out there. The lifeguards on duty, the rank and file, their focus is watching the people in the water. The management of the ocean rescue is checking the rest of the beach. They are on it all day long, every day, seven days a week. And they're the ones that are watching garbage. They're watching whether the hotels or condominiums keep trying to squeeze their lane and narrow it up to get more room for chairs and things. They're out there checking for, for many more things than what the individual lifeguards, their first priority is watching the people and watching the water. But I, I think we should get a report from them as, as a start on, on this. I've been going out with them about once a week since I first heard about this. And I mean, frankly, I, I haven't seen the problem. We have encountered a number of areas on private property that comes out or is hidden from the sand of the beach, which we have had some major cleanups on. Most of it seems to be related to homeless people there, from the nature of the debris that we picked up. But anyway, like I say, I'm not the expert on it. I think, I think the people that, whose opinion would count would be the, the management of our ocean rescue and, and possibly the police. But I know ocean rescue has the best handle on this.
Can, can I, can you clarify? So, there's a, there's a property line, right? And so, each, each, if there's a high-rise or an adjacent property owner such as a hotel, they're only required to clean up up until their property line? And then the rest is basically the jurisdiction of nobody, basically?
No, it's not nobody, it's not nobody. Yeah.
Well, one of the things we did is we got the county some time ago, I forgot how long ago, to do two collections a day. But there's, I think there's a lot more to it. And I think a good starting point would be to get the feedback from the ocean, ocean rescue. I really, I really think that would be a, a, a good starting point.
I mean, for me, when I see that forty pounds, fifty pounds a week is being collected in this area around the pier, it just, it just, and I see it for myself, you know, my question is like, can we do more? Is there something more?
Listen, we can always do more. My, my biggest concern, and Dana, if you can go on mute, I'm sorry.
I don't control the button, so.
Okay, there you go. Okay. So, my biggest concern, just like what happened with the school, the minute we start taking responsibility for something that is responsible for the jurisdiction, and I don't disagree that if they're not doing a good job, that we shouldn't try to do something. But I think if they're not doing a good job, we have to lobby the county to do a better job, like Chris said, with the two pickups. But I can tell you, if we start augmenting, if we start augmenting the work that they do, we're gonna own it. And then all of a sudden, we're gonna be in the trash business. And, you know, for, hold on, let me finish. Just all of a sudden, we're gonna be in the trash business for, for something that we don't, that, that, that isn't our responsibility. Because it's their responsibility, you know, to, because we don't, we don't own the beaches, we know. We took on the lifeguards, we own the lifeguards. We have no county lifeguards. We have no county infrastructure for lifeguards. Just like at the school, we took on the, the handling of the, you know, of the school. And the, 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 the school system gives, you know, no, really, you know, very few resources. I'm okay with that, because I think we made those decisions as a community in a conscious manner. But I want to be, I just want to be careful. I don't disagree if they're doing a, if, if Chris's, if Chris's analysis comes back and says that they're doing a poor job, because sometimes, you know, these interpretations are anecdotal. If they come back and say they're doing a poor job, I would certainly want to start with the county and say, hey, you know, and with the property owners, if they're, if, you know, if they're not doing a proper cleanup, before we go out on a limb and start paying for infrastructure that, you know, that, that, that's other people's responsibility.
So, for me, it's, you know, there's, you're focused on the cleanup.
She's muted.
You're on mute, Dana.
So, you're focused on the cleanup. And I'm saying, what about the focus of prevention or prohibition? What about education? What about, you know, I'm not, you're, you're focused on, do they pick up twice? Should they pick up three times? I'm saying.
Well, you just said there's forty pounds of trash that the guy has at the Newport.
But people, who is, where is this coming from? Where is all the, where is all the gar- you know, you're saying.
It's coming from the beachgoers.
So, how do we, how do we have, you know, better prevention or prohibition techniques so that we don't, it's not about, let's just clean it up, clean it up, clean it up, or get cleanup crews? How can we, how can we deal with that responsibility and shift it a little bit so that, so it's not just about, well, we'll need three pickups or we'll need more trash bins? Or it's more like, how do we prevent people from dumping all this garbage all, all over the place, right?
I think we have to, I think we have to get out there. And I think the first thing is to verify, identify the litter that's there. And, and like I said, they're, they're, they're patrolling it constantly during the day. And I think whether they videotape it every day, the entire beach, so they have it documented, when they come back and say it's XYZ, or it's this way. But I think the key is for them to identify the litter, not to, you know, worry about how many times they pick up or, or, or what happens. I, I think the first step is to identify the magnitude of the problem. That's what I would have them do first.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, Dana, my perspective is, it's pretty common sense that you don't want to litter the beach. I'm not saying that some signage on the, I mean, granted, we could have signage on the beach walk. But I mean, there's signage that says you can't walk your dog, you don't, don't leave litter. I mean, so I don't know, like, I don't know what, what kind of public awareness campaign would, would instill common sense in the people not to leave their trash on the beach. I mean, I think that, I think that, that I'm, I'm not against signage or what have you. But my, my point is, is that, you know, I think it's pretty common sense. I think would, you know, why the, the beach gets littered? Because there's more beachgoers. I mean, you know, people are not that resp- that respectful. You know, and it's just unfortunately, it's society in a lot of ways. But, so I don't, I don't disagree with you that, you know, that potentially more might need to be done. But I think, you know, to the manager's point, you know, let's let them take a look at it, you know, make sure that what we're viewing isn't anecdotal. And then say, come back with a report and say, okay. Because it may be a combination of both. Maybe you're right and I'm right. Maybe it's more signage and it's a, and it's a third pickup. I don't know. But, but I, you know.
I have a comment. More garbage perhaps.
Right. That might be it too. Yeah, yeah, that's it. So, but, I mean, you know, that, that leads to the pickups and everything else. So, I, I, you know, you know, you know, I agree. It might be more receptacles. I mean, there's a lot of them. And they're pretty, they're pretty spaced, pretty close together, you know, they're not that far apart. So, but, but, you know, but I'm sure every, I think every, you know, every municipal, you know, everybody that has a beach, you know, faces, the beach that's open to the public, you know, faces these kind of issues. So, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I do think it's partially because we have maybe hotel guests who don't share, you know, hotel guests or transients don't share the same level of ownership or responsibility. I'm sure that may factor into it. I'm sure in some areas, like in the pier area, maybe it's more significant than in other areas. I'm sure some condos or hotels, maybe they have their own contract or cleanup individual programs that others could aspire or, or model after. But for me, it's more of, hey, can we have a discussion? Because this is something I've thought about for a long time. I've heard a lot from residents. And, you know, I just think, just like we had litter, huge litter problems in the seventies, where people were throwing things out of their cars, and there was a huge national campaign, and people stopped doing it. So, you know, if there is some, there is some educational component or some campaign and some awareness to keep our beaches beautiful. Again, it's , it's, it's the population and it's the growth of that. But I still think it's, it's something that we, we just need to think about. Can we, can we do better? Can we, can we improve on, on this, this litter issue? You know, that's, that's the whole point of this.
So, I think the manager's got his marching orders. So, okay. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have a comment that came in through.
Great.
Comment speaker card. One second.
Okay.
It's from Salvador Pepe. His address is 17555 Atlantic Boulevard. His comment is, "In the last year, I've seen an increase in garbage in the sand and the beaches, and lately, a lot of plastic floating on the water. I collect and fill it back every time I go. The main garbage found are plastic cutlery, used cigarette, plastic plates. Sunny Isles beaches are the most beautiful beaches in all of South Florida. So, the increase in littering is getting them in bad shape and affecting the ecosystem. Please do something to solve this issue. Best regards." And we have two people that requested to speak.
Great.
You, your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. You hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. When I go to the beach, they don't have enough trash can. And each hotel bring the food to the guest, and don't clean up after them. And all the bird, when they fly over the tray, they're making such a mess, which is disaster. This one thing. The other thing, when we live here on North Bay Road on the water, the people celebrating here every night in this empty lot by Publix, and they're doing barbecue, and all the trash going to the water. You walk here in 185th Street from North Bay Road, up and down, you see trash on the grass, if it's bottle, if it's all kind of bag of chips, everything, no cleanup. It's look like really trash everywhere. You go to Surfside, you don't find anything, not on the beach and not in the street. But here, it's really neglected. So, I don't know if it's the post enforcement, I don't know, you know? But somebody has to take care of that.
Thank you, you. Thank you. Mauricio?
Next, we have Jerry or Jody, not sure which one. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm just, you know, I'm not understanding the difficulty with this. This has been a problem for years. You have the high-rises that you allow to go higher and higher and give them free ride of whatever they want. And I don't understand how they're not held responsible to clean up after the vacationers, whether they're there for one day or a week. And maybe there's not enough garbage cans. And I also suggested our lifeguards, who we have to respect as we do everyone else, as our firefighters and our policemen, maybe they should be allowed to give out tickets, because they watch people, we've spoken to them, just throwing cups and what have you all around, no respect for our area. And I know it's a vacation hotspot like South Beach, which we know what South Beach is turned into. We don't want that here. We have to be able to have some kind of control where this isn't allowed. And pollution is a really big problem. If we could let the lifeguards, and again, this is something I brought up a long time ago, I don't know why the lifeguards can't hand out tickets. You know, why we have to walk around, and in all honesty, the high-rises were supposed to be a hundred feet apart. And I repeat myself over and over again, but for whatever reason, you know, let's all think about it for ourselves, they were allowed to be constructed fifty feet apart. And they're doing what they want. There's no control. They're throwing, they're, they're, you know, loitering. It's just, it's horrible. And the problem is what you're all discussing. So, what do we do to, you know, correct this problem? And, you know, it's been forever. I know I'm at one second, but still, it's something that I've been talking about for years. And we're back at the same problem. Let's correct this. What do we do? Is it the high-rises? Can we hold the high-rises responsible? Should we have more trash cans? What?
And the hotels.
And the hotels. I mean, let, let's be honest, Sunny Isles is letting the hotels go higher and higher. We have no say-so. They, whatever they want and request, but... They, whatever they want and request, Bud, you've been giving them the, you know, carte blanche, as high as they want to go, as large as they want to go, you know, but they're, they're having no responsibility as to what's going on our, on our beaches. And if I may add, there's no sun on our sand and that's just not healthy. The sand needs sun to help fight the bacteria. I mean, we just have high rises and we have to like, anyone that comes to visit, they have to, you know, constantly move, keep on moving to try to get some sun. It's just not a healthy situation. But again, we're discussing the same thing over and over again and everybody's-
Thank you, Jody.
I'm crazy and I'm over the time limit.
Yeah.
But what are we gonna do?
Yeah. Thank you. Well, I can tell you, lifeguards can't write tickets. Because if they write the ticket, somebody could be drowning. Okay? That's the issue. So it's really not, just like a firefighter can't be pulling somebody over. I mean, so it's, it's, it's very problematic for that to happen. So I don't believe that, that lifeguards policing the beach are the answer. So, um, but, but that's, you know, that's, because I know that's come up several times by different people and it's, it's unreasonable to expect lifeguards to be able to write tickets on the beach, you know, because they're there for, for saving people. Okay. Okay. Any, any other comments from the commission? Okay. I think staff's, again, got clarity. Chris is gonna look into it and we'll, you know, and staff will report back and see what they find and see what they think about it. So, okay, thank you, Commissioner Goldman. Last but not least, item 12C.
Okay, that would be me. So I wanted to bring this up as a discussion item. The, the, there is a program through the University of Miami and Nova that provides training for municipalities or different organizations to help in, in improving interactions with people with autism, in, in improving the spaces and, and the environments. And what I, what I wanted to bring to your attention is that there's, you know, the possibility of bringing, bringing the program to Sunny Isles to work with Cultural and Community Services and Sylvia. They help train people who work with the public to have, you know, they teach them effective strategies, they, and they would provide recommendations for autism-friendly spaces and sensory-friendly activities. They also have a separate training for police departments, which our police department participated in, in the past. When, when I became aware of this program and I brought it to Chief Mass's attention, but it's been a few years. And, you know, we may be due for a refresher on top of the, whatever regular training they get. So, and the best part about this program is that it's free of charge. So they come in and, you know, they, they help train staff, they help train police departments if the police department wants it. And we are then on track to being a more inclusive city for people, you know, of all abilities. So that's the, that was, that was my, what I wanted to bring up as a discussion item and see what you think.
Vice Mayor.
So first of all, Commissioner Viscara, I want to say, thank you for bringing this up. I remember when you brought this up, I believe you were on the CAC at that time. And I, I'm sorry, I thought that that was an ongoing training for the PD. I didn't realize-
What happened is that after, after we did that, it actually became state law to receive, around that time, do you remember there was this incident that-
Yes, yes, I do.
No. So that, I think that was the trigger and so we were actually ahead of the curve with this training. And so the, the department is receiving training, but this can be an additional layer if they want it.
All right. Well, I, I, I gotta say that I'm in full support of this. You know, as you know, I, I volunteer a lot at the school. I, I see how that population is, is, is growing because it's being identified sooner and, and sooner. And, and I know that, that Chris and Susan and Sylvia have been very open to this sort of thing because at one point I had brought in people from Department of Homeland Security to do training with staff to detect, you know, potential signs of human trafficking. So this, this is, this is wonderful and just like that was, it's free. So how, how could you, you know, if, if it helps our community-
There's no refunds on this.
There's no refund, but, you know, I, I, yeah, this is, this is a really great idea, great program. And, uh, yeah, I, I totally support it, whatever, you know, I'm sure Chris does as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mauricio, I think they have a public speaker. I see Jerry, Jerry and Jody with their hand up.
Name and address for the record, please. Jerry or Jody, whichever one it is.
You gotta come off me. There you-
We are off mute. Hi, just to continue what we were saying, I understand, you know, Bud, I was on the swim team, I understand, you know, I was a lifeguard.
No, Jody, Jody, we're not, I, I can't do it anymore. I, I can't commingle the items.
But, but, you said that to me after two-
Jody, you get-
Give me five seconds.
I know, but Jody, you, you had your three minutes, but no, you had your three minutes. Again, you know, I mean, I, I got, we actually got complaints that I'm drifting off the agenda and I'm-
You got complaints regarding me? Did you get complaints regarding-
And no, not, not, I didn't say you specifically, I'm getting, I'm getting, we, we got complaints that were drifting off the agenda. In my opening remarks tonight, I made it clear. I said, I'm gonna open and close the public hearing.
Okay, Bud, you're talking a lot to be fair, might I just say, Bud-
You speak, I am being fair. You, you had three minutes to speak to the item. You spoke to the item.
And give us one moment, please. You said you had complaints. Were these complaints against me? Yes or no? Yes or no?
No, not against you directly, not against you directly. They were, they were, I, I received complaints the way I'm allowing the meeting to be run because I'm trying to be over indulgent, okay? But the fact of the matter is, we're on another item, okay? I'm sorry, but we moved on. You had three minutes to speak to the prior item. You made your point.
And that's okay, thank-
I do. I'm the mayor, I run the meeting. That's what I was elected to do.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure you said they were not against me.
It was not against you. It was not against you. I actually, and, and Jody, you know, you know, I like you and Jerry a lot. It's not against you. But the fact is, I gotta run the meeting properly and you're right.
And Bud, you run the meeting to what, what suits your needs and I appreciate that.
Okay. That, that's a, that, that's, that's your interpretation. I like to believe I run the meeting in accordance with the rules.
Insinuating, thank you.
No, 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 I'm not insinuating that at all. I'm not, I'm just said, I said that, you know, because if you notice, I changed the opening statement. The opening statement was modified because of, you know, because we want to stay on, stay on task. That's all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bud. I'm not talking, I'm giving into that, so let's not waste any time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I appreciate it. Any, any other comments regarding this, this item?
We have one more person there.
Okay. Go ahead. Jude? Great. Yep, and then Alex.
Yeah, let me, let me tell you something which I really don't like. With all the respect for you, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I hear you.
Yeah, good. Let me tell you something. With all the respect I have for you and all your friends around you, I want you to understand one thing. We've been quiet and listened for the one hour and 30 minutes for Atlantic with the house and the remodeling. We didn't say one word, but I think you should be more, you know, sensitive from Golden Isles, which we are not in the back of the bus. We are one of the resident here and nobody pay attention to us. So if-
Jude, respectfully, we're, we're talking about autism. You bring it up at the end or ask the speaker, but we're talking about autism.
It's okay. It's okay. Yeah, ay, ay, ay. But let me tell you something.
This is about autism. We need to stay on the item, okay?
No, but we have to stay on the item.
Be respectful of Commissioner Viscara's item.
But if my neighbor, she has a problem-
I mean, be respectful of Commissioner Viscara.
Can I talk? Okay? Can I talk? I finished first grade long time ago. With all the respect, okay? If my neighbors want to say something, I think you should respect her and you give her more than three minutes. We are not in the government here, we are not in the high school here. I think you should respect and let us talk, you know? And I have few items before we continue and it's not on this autism. And somebody tried to broke to my three cars like two months ago and I have the video for that and I gave it to the detective, nobody did anything. This week, they robbed somebody, threw straight down, they took her phone, they took her purse, nobody did anything. My daughter coming from work, she living in the war, in the morning. I'm not living in South Africa with the security here to come to go outside to bring her home because we scared what's going on here. We don't have enough security.
Jude, I will take you personally to the police chief. Okay? I understand, I will take you personally to the police chief, okay? So the police chief will sit down with you, I promise you, okay?
Okay. I will wait for his response.
I promise you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If not, I, I'll knock on your door, believe me.
Believe me, you can knock on my door if the police chief doesn't call you tomorrow, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Jude. Okay. Okay, speaking of autism, Commissioner Lama.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Viscara. This is a great program and I'm, I'm very happy when I saw it on the agenda. So, you know, kudos to, to Commissioner Viscara and I look forward to, to implementing this program in the city.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Okay. I see Jerry and Josie, Jody's hand up again. Mauricio? Okay, hold on a second. Mauricio's not at his desk. Mauricio's getting back to his control panel. Mauricio, go ahead.
Hi, this is something, again, I've been speaking about for, wow, over a year. I have a very dear friend of mine whose son is afflicted by autism and it's, it's a wonderful program. He goes around and they speak to all the police departments and I was trying to get them to come to Sunny Isles Beach and I hope it's the same program because it's just amazing and it's wonderful. He's nonverbal, unfortunately, but it's such a different life for the parent of a child who's autistic. We're so blessed if we don't have that situation. And my friend Terry, who's amazing, she has a different life with her son. Sorry, sorry. And he's just amazing, he's a gift. But he's been going around and helping police and, you know, teaching them how to work and understand how a child with autism is and an adult, adult at this point. So I hope it's her program, if not whatever program, I think it's wonderful and it's taken a long time. And if not, please contact me and I'll be happy to hook you up with my girlfriend Terry because she, she's wonderful and what she's done for the, you know, autos, autism community is just amazing.
I would be happy to talk to her if, if she wants to reach out. I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to her. I, I don't, I, I started out, my, my first job as a, out of college was as a special education teacher. And so I, I had a lot of interaction and, and it's, it's very close, it's something that hits close to home for me. And I, I know these parents, you know, they, you're right, they don't have the, the typical parenting experience and a lot of us, we can just go to the park and sort of like, release the, the hounds, right? Just, just release them in the park and let them burn out their energy and, and while we can kind of kick back a little bit. And parents with autistic children often don't have that luxury. Even if you're at the park, you, you're on guard at all times and it's, and if you don't have environment-
Jennifer, I, I greatly appreciate that and contact me because I think it's so important and it has our heart, you know, our heartstrings are, ugh. And, you know, I'll, I'll have you get in touch with my girlfriend Terry and she's the president of the Autism Society. And, you know, I've been trying to get Sunny Isles involved in this program, but, you know, some things don't work out, it's hard. So please contact me, I think it's really important and I so appreciate you communicating this information with me. Thank you so much, Jennifer.
You're very welcome.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. So anything else to come before us, Mauricio?
Yes, we just have two more comments on the citizens forum.
Mauricio, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before you get to that, Mayor, could you please ask the individual who was talking about the car thefts or break-in in, in Golden Shores, your name and phone number? The acting chief will call.
Yeah. Okay. Jude? Jude, could you give us your name and phone number?
Jude Marinoff, 18540, North Bay Road.
Okay. So Jude, so Jude, if the, if the chief doesn't call you, 334 Atlantic Isle, you get to knock on my door.
Don't worry. I can find you.
I know, I know you can find me, Jude. I have no doubt. Thank you. Thank you, Jude. Thank you. Okay, Mauricio. Who else is?
Okay. The last ones. This comes from Natalie W. Her address is 251 80th Drive. It says, "The homeless situation in Sunny Isles has gotten worse over the last couple of months, recently with several homeless people camping by Sampson Park under the covering near the bench entrance, the beach entrance. There are children's playground within a couple of feet and the homeless men and women not only occupy the area, but they become drunk and aggressive to anyone nearby. Last week, we had to call the cops and not for the first time. They had taken over the bus stops and parks. When will this stop? Why is this, why isn't this being addressed? We deserve a place to take our kids in peace and without aggressive drunks." And then the next one is from Gloria, address is 100 Kings Point Drive. This comment is in Spanish, so bear with me, I'm going to try to translate it as I read it. It says, "Good evening, thank you for allowing me to participate in the meeting. In regards, in addition to the garbage on the beach, we've seen an increase in the homeless sleeping on the benches in the bus stops and it's something that occurs daily. Not only do they sleep there, but they also leave their garbage and lots of mess around. It looks like a very bad situation. Thank you." And that is it, Mayor.
That is it. Okay. And I think Chris, you know, we, we deal with this on a regular basis in terms of, you know, what we can and can't do with the homeless. So, but I think, I think Chris, you know, you're, you're, you're well aware and I get, you know, I, I call Chris regularly and I get pinged regularly, you know, from the public regarding the homeless. So, okay. I want to thank everyone. Stay safe, stay vigilant, you know, we're, we're not out of the woodshed on COVID, so, you know, please, you know, continue to be careful and get vaccinated. So, thank you.
I just want to add one thing before you close, one thing before you close?
Jennifer.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to, because there is something that's going on that I thought was a good symbol, I guess, a good sign of our, of our improving economic situation, which is our hospitality job fair at Government Center on this weekend. And I, I had asked Susan if maybe she could just give a, a little information on that if there's any residents would like to attend, if she's still on. She just disappeared. There you are.
No, I would love to. Um, this Saturday, here at the Government Center, first floor, under the parking garage, same place that we have the pedestrian bike safety. We have 12 different employers in the city that will be participating. Some of them are actually offering sinus, signing bonuses to encourage people to come work for them.